Meeting to order, please. We need a roll call of attendance.
Done.
Need a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have a bunch of discussion items on tonight. The first one being the Achievement and Integration Budget and Q Comp. Sarah?
All right, I'm Sarah Dusick, the District Q Comp and Achievement and Integration Coordinator, and I'm just here to share the budgets for next fiscal year with you. The first budget that we'll look at is the MCP budget, the Q Comp budget. There were quite a few changes made to the Q Comp plan this year. The biggest one being that we went from receiving funding from the general fund to becoming self-sustaining based on the money that we get from the state and from the levy. That's already been voted on and approved by the membership, so it's in place to be set for next year. This isn't a budget thing, but because of some of the changes that we're making by going to self-sustaining, through the MAFE grant, the coaches were approved to attend an instructional coaching conference in October, which will help keep moving the program forward and help with another coaching model that will be more beneficial with the changes that are happening with the program. The biggest changes to the plan are this year, we currently have four coaches. Next year, we're going down to three. The facilitator stipend for PLCs is going from 1,800 to 1,700. There will be 16, there are 16 hours of training this year, next year will be 12. But we're going to work on coupling the facilitators up with the coaches to meet with them monthly to help plan the meetings and do resource prep and help them get the materials ready for their PLC meeting, so they'll have more of a monthly direct support from the coaches as opposed to from the coordinator. The teacher stipend is going from $2,000 to $1,600, and they're going from working three cycles with their coach to two longer cycles with their coach. And then the breakdown of the stipends is this year, it's $1,200 for their work with their coaches, $600 for their PLC participation, and then $200 if their site meets their goal. Next year, it'll go to $900 for their two cycles with their coaches. We're keeping the PLC participation at 600, and the site goal will go to $100 for the sites that don't meet their goal. So that's basically the changes to the Q Comp program. The Achievement and Integration Budget, there's two different budgets within the two, within the Achievement and Integration. There's the regular budget, and then there's incentive. And both within those budgets, 80% has to be spent with direct student contact, and 20% is in professional development. And so for in the main budget, the biggest changes to the budget are that we are working on creating a student office of support at the high school, and a big portion of that funding will go towards the lead teacher of that room. And the lead teacher of that room will be specialized in restorative practices, but will also work with the outreach to support our poverty and minority students. And then there will also be, out of that budget, a para for the student office of support that will help with the restorative practices at the high school. And then a para, an outreach para, to help support the outreach part of that program as well. Because the funding had to come from somewhere, we will not have the Growing Scholars Program at the elementary level anymore. And that can be sustainable, because now that we went to more of a heterogeneous classroom model, a lot of those student needs are being met within the classroom through differentiation. And then, within the Achievement and Integration Plan, we have to have, one of our interventions has to be in collaboration with ISD 622, who's our equity district. And the Growing Scholars Program used to be that. So in the plan, it was changed that now what we're going to do to meet that need with ISD 622 is Castle 3rd grade, the 3rd grade classrooms at Castle are going to partner with three of our 3rd grade classrooms at OH Anderson, and they're going to meet four times a year, twice on our site and twice on their site, and work on the Lucy Cockens units of studies, because both schools have the Lucy Cockens units of study. The teachers are given a planning day this spring to help plan what those four days are going to look like. And then it'll be supported through the collaborative, through the work that we do with Jeff Cabot and then with their school. And that actually meets the goals and definition of the collaborative more, because it's, the collaborative is intended to bring our students, who are not as much like their diverse students, together. And with Growing Scholars, we identified our Growing Scholars as our poverty and minority students. They identified their Growing Scholars as poverty and minority students. And when we brought the two groups together, it was bringing our like groups together as opposed to our non-like groups together. So by going back to the classroom connections, it brings all of the groups together as opposed to our like groups together. And then a big part of that, of the main budget, is for professional development. We were able to secure bringing Dr. Sharaki Holly in to do professional development with our teachers. He will be coming on our, two of our professional development days next year, and he'll be working with all staff on those days. And then we'll have the opportunity to have him coach 10 of our secondary teachers three times a year next year on the culturally linguistic responsive teaching and learning practices, CLR. And we're really excited about that happening. We've been doing a lot of learning about him so far this year. And to actually secure him, to bring him in to do the work with our schools is pretty exciting. And then we are also hoping to offer next year another one of the poverty simulations that we're offering this year, the Walk in Another Shoes, to help support our, our learning on equity and opportunity and access, so. On the slide, you'll see that some of the writing is in blue. And those were parts of our plan that we had to do amendments for, because we didn't meet our Achievement and Integration Plan goals for the 15, 2015 to 2017 cycle. So all districts that didn't meet their goals were asked to show in their plan where they chose to do improvement planning to help support that we would meet our goals for this cycle around. So these are the changes that are being made to help support us in meeting, to help support us in being successful in obtaining those goals for the 2020 end of this, this Achievement and Integration Plan. The smaller part of the Achievement and Integration Budget is the incentive part of the Achievement and Integration Budget, and that is intended to be spent to help support enrollment disparities, to help level out the supports that we have for those students. There's quite a few changes in the incentive part of the plan. One of the changes is that we're looking at securing two part-time paras to help support our kindergarten classrooms, with some of them going more play-based and instruction. And the purpose of that is we're seeing some more heightened behaviors in, in some of our kindergarten students, and we believe that it's because they don't have opportunity and access to quality preschool. So they aren't prepared for the structures that we provide in our kindergarten. And for, you know, 80, 90% of our students, what we already have in place in our kindergarten meets their needs because of their history and their experience with preschool. But for some of our students who haven't, it, it doesn't. So we're going to support the teachers in having more play-based structure, and the paras will help with that. And they'll help with during the play-based learning time, they'll help support social, emotional, and academic learning that happens during those play-based instruction times. And then also another enrollment disparity that we're looking at is in our Fab Lab courses at the high school, there aren't as many poverty and minority students that register for those classes. So we're looking at doing a Fab Lab STEAM camp this summer and offering it to our poverty, targeting our poverty and minority students to give them experience with the aspects of the Fab Lab and get them interested and excited about the opportunities that are afforded in the Fab Lab, so they would be interested in registering for those courses. And then for the professional development piece, in the incentive portion, it's, we're looking at sending three more people to the Nexus Training at the Science Museum, and that's some training that myself, Beth Sneeden, and Kirsten Bowens attended this year. It's 11 full days of pretty intense training on enrollment disparity system changes within your schools in order to meet opportunity and access for all students. And then training for both the paras and the teachers on the play-based structures for the kindergarten classroom. And then in your handouts, you have a copy of the amended plan. The only change to the Achievement and Integration Plan was that intervention number one, where we aren't having Growing Scholars, but we're doing the collaborative between OH Anderson and Castle Elementary. And then it has the more lined-out, itemized of the budget. So most of it, a lot of it stayed the same, except for the ones that I highlighted here for you tonight.
So for the students who will be the focus of those paras, are they identified at the screening at that point? Or when are they identified, so you know which classes they'll be in?
Right.
To assign those paras?
Through the screening and through registration.
Okay.
We weren't able to do that this year, because the registration happened sooner than. So we're hoping to send out a mailing that will just kind of gather information on have the students attended preschool, was it full day, part day, five days a week, three days a week? Even as much as if they've had daycare experience, if it was center-based or home, or home-based, how many days a week they went to? Because those factors all play a part in how much they are able to sit and, you know, do the, do the learning that takes place, or if they aren't, so.
So it's kind of like a kindergarten entry profile. Do we do anything similar to that already?
The teachers gather that information at the assessment period, the two days before school starts. But we're hoping to gather that information sooner, so that it can slightly impact where we place students.
So you would try to place enough of them in one place that the para would be the most, get the most use?
Yeah, that would be the plan right now, yeah. We're still working with the kindergarten team to finalize for sure what that's going to look like. They have a lot of great ideas, too, but we haven't been able to have that official meeting before the budget was due.
Has any research been done as far as the Fab Lab? The students that are currently underrepresented and they haven't registered? Any inquiries been made as to why they haven't been? Or is there any reason that you can, and how are you going to reach out to them for the STEAM? STEAM Summer Camp?
That information was just gathered in having conversations with Courtney McCormick, who's the, who's the kind of the head of the Fab Lab, that she just is noticing that girls and poverty and minority kids are underrepresented in those courses, and that she'd like to figure out a way to get them represented. For this year, to do that camp this summer, we would reach out to the science teachers to see if they would have any recommendations of students who they think would be interested in pursuing the Fab Lab courses that they aren't doing right now.
On the, you said you're going from four coaches down to three coaches?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the one coach who will no longer be a coach, will they be going back into teaching?
Jenny Caskey is our fourth coach right now, and she is retiring. So we just won't repost to hire that position.
It is nice to be presented with a budget that's gone down. But we appreciate your self-sustaining part of that a lot.
The membership had a lot to do with that as well, and the governance board.
On the professional development piece, where you've got the Holly individualized coaching, how are the teachers selected? Do they self, I mean, do they volunteer to do this? Or how does that work?
We, we will work with the teachers and the secondary administrators to identify them. One of the things that Sharaki Holly requires when he coaches people is, if he's going to coach 10, he wants like five to six to really have already bought into CLR, really believe in their practices, what CLR stands for. And then he wants the other four or five to be lukewarm to it, so that there's growth. He will not coach anybody who is not in support of the practices yet. So they'll be identified, working with the administration team and teachers, just to identify where are they at in the belief of those practices, and who we can move forward. And his, Sharaki Holly, when I had the conversation with him, his reasoning for that is if they're lukewarm, the lukewarm people are going to be the ones who move the cold people into believing in the practices, because they're on the fence. If somebody's already bought in, they're going to have a harder time moving the people who are cold to it. So if we coach already people who are warm to it and then lukewarm to it, we can easily, in a more easy, more easily, sorry, move the people who are cold to the practices along.
Thank you very much.
So Sarah, before, well, thank you for your work on submitting to the Board on approval of the budget.
The state has changed that. They don't need approval from the superintendent or the Board anymore. They just request that we share with you the plan of what the budget is, and then we submit it to them, so.
I was looking at this page for all the certification statements.
They said they still keep it in case the school district expires, if they don't acquire it as of this date anymore. Yep.
The levy community survey results.
Thank you. Manager and members of the Board here, Don Lipto from Springstead, is here. And he'll be sharing with us the results that they did of the scientific survey. It's very detailed, but I think you'll find the information valuable. And that's, what I'd like to do is as the, after the presentation, we have some questions of Don and have a discussion as to our next steps that we should do with a potential levy. So having said that, if I can turn over to you, Don, Dr. Lipto?
Turn around a little bit, so I can see what I'm talking about. Sorry, my back is to you. Very happy to be here tonight to go through the PowerPoint overview of the study we recently concluded. I'm sure the Board is aware that virtually all of the school districts in the Severn County metro area do these kinds of studies periodically, typically every three to five years, for a variety of reasons. The last study here, full study was 2013, so about five years ago, and then a shorter one in 2014. In terms of the study, before I get into the specifics, the Board will eventually receive three deliverables showing you what was learned from the study. One of them is what you'll see tonight, which is just simply a PowerPoint overview at a high level. And then we just finished this afternoon detailed data analysis, where you can, you know, look in and see what 18 to 24-year-olds say about the district, what did people say who live in this community versus a different part of the community. And so you have a very, very detailed report also that you'll be getting soon. And then the last piece is, there were two open-ended questions. And I don't remember the exact language, but, you know, what do you really like about the district that we need to protect and enhance? What changes do you think need to be made? And so those take a little longer to process, because you've got, you know, 700 statements that you've got to figure out what it means, put it together. I think we'll have that for you by the end of next week, probably. So with that, let me get into the information. In this particular study, we completed interviews with 350 registered voters. And as you can see, that was in late March, or late February to early March. The approximate margin of error is 5.1% plus and minus. To make it really easy math for you, just think of it as 5% margin of error. So if one of these slides say that 60% of the people think the district is doing a great job, add 5% to that, to 65, you subtract 5% to 55, that's your margin of error. And statistically, there's a 95% chance that the true score lies in that range. So when you see the margin of error, that's the context for you to think about it. One thing about this particular study that I think is important for you to have at least some understanding of is Springstead's methodology uses what's called stratified random sample surveying. The important word in that is stratified. And what that means is before anybody gets called, we do a very detailed analysis of all registered voters living within the school district, and basically count, how many women are there, how many men, how many people my age, how many 18 to 24-year-olds, how many in Hugo that's part of this district as compared to some other part of the district, how many people always vote, how many people never vote, and other demographic characteristics. And so we do all that counting. And then once we have a profile of the demographics of all registered voters who live here, then we're able to work with our professional call center to give them targets. And so if we find out that 53% of registered voters are female, we don't want to interview 63% females. And that's what the stratified means. And there's several graphs that reinforce, if you're more of a visual learner. And I'll talk a little bit about this, and then I'll move through the next ones quickly. The blue that you see in this slide and the next four or five slides is the actual profile demographically of registered voters who live within the boundaries of the district. So that's the blue. You can see there are more females than males. There are always more females than males. So the blue represents the actual demographics of all registered voters living here. The orange represents the profile of the 350 people who are interviewed. So the, as we go through these slides, to the extent that you see the blue, which is everybody, the orange, which is who was interviewed, pretty close. It means we successfully controlled for that demographic. And so in this case, gender, here's your age demographic. Oftentimes, when I'm doing these presentations, I'll get a question and say, well, how did you ever get young people? Were they missing? Well, no, they weren't missing, because we target a percentage for young voters, for example. If you don't do that, you end up talking to way too many people 55 and up. If you don't target by gender, you end up talking to way too many women. So the stratified is really important in the work that we do. As you could see, a very nice profile, and the people we interviewed roughly were similar to the percentages of everybody. Here's the information geographically, so we don't want to, you know, have too many interviews in just one part of the school district, for example. This, this one shows past voting activity. So we went into our database and looked at the last nine elections that took place within the boundaries of the school district, and basically counted. How many people voted in nine out of nine? How many people voted in eight out of nine? How many people voted in zero out of nine? And then after we did all that counting, we put them in three piles. So in this particular case, very active means I voted in six, seven, eight, or nine out of the last nine. In the middle, it's three, four, five, and over on your left, it's zero, one, two. Now, why is this important? Well, every citizen is equally important, whether they are registered to vote and how frequently they vote. But it's also true that your most active citizens are going to be paying more attention. And some, it's sometimes it's helpful to know if there's a difference in opinion of those folks compared to somebody else. So that's all this demographics do for you. And then this is the parent, non-parent. The worst thing that any company could do for you, including Springstead, is significantly oversample parents. So as you can see, in this particular case, the actual profile is 30%, and I think we were at 28%. So again, very, very close. School boards that make decisions based on studies that oversample parents are on thin ice, because that just is not representative of the community as a whole. And as I go through the rest of this, remember this slide. You know, over 70% of the people responding don't have kids in school. So you're not just looking at what parents think. I always get asked, well, how can you do these things with cell phones? Well, the answer is, we call people and talk to them on their cell phones. In your particular study, as you can see, the landlines were right around 60%, cell phones were right around 40. And all the studies we've done in the last, you know, four or five years have looked somewhat similar to this. A couple, we've gotten close to 50% on cell phones. So it's, it's about 50/50, and that is not an issue as we do these, this kind of work. So in terms of the portion of this study that was looking at funding and potential for an operating referendum request in the future, we use what's called a three-benchmark test. This first one is called the uninformed benchmark. And fairly early in the survey, you know, we say, the Monomy that public schools is thinking about doing this to raise additional money in order to accomplish this, what do you think? And it's called uninformed, because people don't know at this point how much more money is needed or wanted. They don't know what the implications are for programs, or kids, or class sizes, or cost, or taxes, or anything else. It's just a general statement to get an initial reaction. And based on this particular study, it was very positive. 58%, that's the blue, are saying, yes, I would be willing to support that. That's a little bit higher than we typically see. I was telling Bill and Mark that, you know, 45 to 55 range would be more common. So this is a little bit better than what we typically see. Remember, the only information they had is what you saw in that last slide. So to get that level of support initially is good. So that's the uninformed benchmark. Then we go ahead and essentially tell people, we're going to give you some additional information. And some of that information talks about potential consequences on the negative side if there isn't more funding. Some of the consequences are positive consequences. If there is enough funding, we can do this, and we can do that, and we can enhance something else. And when we actually do the prompts with the people we interview, half of them hear the negative consequences first, and then the positive second. The other half hear the positive first and the negative second. So we don't get any positional bias in terms of how people are, are reacting. So I'm going to read you some statements about the impact of the district's current operating referendum. It's not replaced with a higher one. For each of these, tell me if that would make you more likely or less likely to be supportive. There were, there's one that was a split sample that related to STEM. In some school districts, we found that if you ask people if they support the engineering program focused on math, science, engineering, they're very supportive. If you ask them if they support the STEM program, they're not so supportive. And obviously, it's the same thing. So we typically test that. And in your particular case, what we learned is you've done a great job in having people understand what that means, because it didn't make any difference, as you'll see in a couple of the charts. In addition to having half the people hear the negatives, consequences first, and then the positive, and then the reverse, we also do these probes randomly. So everybody hears them in a different order. So essentially, what you're seeing here is we're saying, if you knew that one of the consequences, not getting additional revenue, is that class sizes would go up, would that make you more likely, much more likely? Less likely, no difference? How would that affect your thinking about a potential referendum in the future? So if you just kind of look at the right, or at the left half of this graph, the blue is saying, knowing this would make me much more likely to be supportive. And the orange is somewhat more likely. Then you can see the other types of reactions moving left to right. As you can see, just, you know, visually, generally, the support levels were pretty consistent. I mean, you didn't see huge differences in the blue and the orange. On average, the positive support was 59%. So that's adding up the much more likely and somewhat likely. And we use the word negative support here, that's only relatively, because they were all so close. That's only relatively because they were all so close, but extracurriculars and engineering were relatively lower compared to the rest. Now, those were the potential negative consequences. We also looked at positive consequences, and again, we did the split sample on the And so this is what it looked like on that set of questions. Now, the prompt is the same. I'm going to tell you some more about this potential operating levy. Tell me if knowing this would make you more likely or less likely to be supportive. So the bigger the bar in the blue and red, the more positively that particular detail resonated with people. So you can see on question 25, providing additional specialists in math and reading to help struggling students was the highest supported potential positive consequence. People liked that idea. And the rest of these, again, going from top to bottom, you can see, similar to the first graph that was like this, there's a lot of uniformity and a lot of pretty good strong support. And you might have also picked up visually that overall, the support on the positive consequences was a little bit better, averaging 68%. And again, that's the blue and the orange. Those two averaged 68 compared to 59 for that first set that I went through, which were the negative consequences. Now, lest you come to the conclusion that we shouldn't talk about any negative consequences, I would discourage you to think that way. We need to talk about both. But you also got some direction from this on how people are responding to both, which may be helpful moving forward. After going through all of that, we're coming back for what we call the informed benchmark. Remember, I called the first one the uninformed? Now, people have gotten information, detail, context, examples. So we're essentially coming back and saying, okay, I told you some stuff about this. Tell me again, what do you think? And the informed benchmark went to 64. Now, school districts that do these kinds of studies always want the informed benchmark to go north, and when it doesn't, that's not a good thing. But in addition to improving, I also note that the improvement was greater than the margin of error. So 5.7% increase in support, a 5.1% margin of error, means that statistically, it's a real improvement. Or another way of thinking about it is, if all of the margin of error was the wrong direction, the informed support would still be higher than the initial support. So that's positive. You started decent, and after people got information, it moved ahead greater than the margin of error. So that's the informed benchmark. The third benchmark is considering a potential referendum increase in the context of taxes, property taxes in this particular case. And similar to some of the other methodology I commented on earlier, these are also done in random order. So one person might get a call, and they'll hear 175 first, and someone else will get a call and hear 125 first. If we called somebody and asked the 150 first, and they said no, then we'd go to the 125, and they wouldn't hear the 175. If we talked to somebody and said 175, and they said yes, they don't hear the other two numbers. I think you understand as I explain that why. But it's important that they be done that way to avoid having a sense that you're being taken up the ladder or down the ladder and have that affect how you respond. So this provides a more accurate measure of tax tolerance. This is what it looks like for the visual learners. Again, the references we used were 125, 150, and 175. And here you're seeing the percentage of support at each. Mark and Bill did a very good job working with the technical people at Springstead to choose a reasonable range. And for me, the definition of a reasonable range is you don't want to see a graph here with, you know, ranging from 30% support to 41, with everything being, you know, underwater. It's not very helpful for planning purposes. So we like to see something somewhat like this, where you can just visually see some potential solutions in the range you talked about as you continue your planning. Now, this next slide is very busy, but basically, what we're doing is looking at that and saying, were there differences in how people responded based on past voting behavior? And so we're taking this slide and then breaking it out and saying, well, what did the people say who always vote? That's the blue section, and you can see where that blue line runs on the chart. The orange are the people who kind of get there about half the time, and the green are your least active voters. That's zero, one, or two out of the last nine. Now, that's a combination of people, for whatever reason, don't vote very much, and 18, 19-year-olds who have only had one chance. So if I'm 18 or 19 and I voted in November of 17, I'm one out of nine. So there's no negative connotations with that. It's just simply what the numbers are. And in your particular case, which is fairly common, your strongest support came from your folks most, least likely to vote.
Is that because it's kids and they're not paying taxes?
There's a very close correlation between inactive voters and age, yes. So it's not a negative, it's just as it is. But it's useful to know and understand. The pie chart up on the right is showing you the relative size of each group. So we said, you know, the blue folks always vote. Well, that's 11% of the registered voters. Are you following back and forth there? So the line graph is the 350 people who responded. The pie chart is the actual profile for your district. And as you can see, almost two out of three fall into that middle category. Now, when you look at, you know, November 18, it's going to be really interesting to predict turnout. You can go back into the Secretary of State's database and, you know, look at six similar elections, even year, non-presidential, and you can run an average and say, okay, it's probably going to be 28%. But the interesting things that are going on that may affect that are, number one, replacing former Senator Franken, which is likely to get a fair amount of interest; electing a new governor, which is likely to get quite a bit of interest; and the other one that's kind of a wild card is whether the activism of non-voters or non-vilains gets them more engaged than normal. Now, all three of those that I commented on would have the tendency to move, turn up a little. So as we do our planning and thinking, if the average in similar elections over time was 28%, you know, maybe we should be assuming it might be more like 32% or 33% or 34%. I'm not suggesting that that's scientific, it's a random guess, I'm just saying it's a way of changing the model as you need. We also asked folks what they thought about gradual increases in the levy over time. As you know, the maximum term for an operating referendum is 10 years. And increasingly, in recent years, districts have, rather than saying, I want $500 a student for 10 years, they might say, I want $500 a student for the 2019, '20 school year, and the '21, '22, and the '22, '23. In '22, '24, we're going to need 550 or 600. And in the seventh year, we're going to need 650 or 70. And that actually goes into the ballot, proposal in that way. And that's becoming more common, simply recognizing that it's going to cost more to do business in 2024 than it does today, just with normal inflation. So we asked people what they think about that idea, and that got the same 58% that was the original. Uninformed benchmark? That's pretty good, in terms of how people responded to that. These next few slides show you some quick snapshots of results of demographic groups. And in each case, what you're seeing is, how did people respond after they got information but before they heard anything about taxes? So this is a test after the informed benchmark, but before taxes. And so male, female, in terms of percentage of support for an increase in the operating referendum. This particular slide is quite unusual. I can't remember the last time I saw that particular outcome. Usually, men will lag behind women somewhere between 5 and 10% in their support level. And so the fact that it's pretty uniform, I would consider to be, you know, a positive. Here is the support level based on age. This is a pretty common profile. We had that question about, you know, young people, is that why that less active voter was more supportive? And you can see here, the support level from that 18 to 24-year-old group is the highest. Unfortunately, they don't vote without a lot of encouragement. Other than that, this is a pretty normal profile. This is, again, based on geography. The largest parts of the district, again, very uniform. This is based on parent status. Now, in understanding this particular slide, a parent is somebody who has one or more children attending Montomede Public Schools today. A non-parent is someone who says, I have never had students attend the Montomede Public Schools. And in that middle bar, that we call alumni parents, people like me who would say, I have three kids. Kids go through the school district, but they're all gone. Now, a lot of times, when people look at this slide, they're a little surprised that, you know, it wasn't parents, alumni parents, non-parents. But what you're seeing here is actually the most common finding when we sort it that way. And there's been some research done related to that that suggests that many of those alumni parents tend to be 55 to 65, and...
So that's the bump on that other page right here, where you see the 55 to 64.
It depends on which age group you look at, but the point is that a lot of people in that range, whether it's 55 to 60, or somewhere in that 55 to 65 area, are checking their 401Ks after they hear the stock market went down 3%. They're trying to figure out if they're able to retire and live. Some have bounce-back kids who went off college and didn't get a sustainable job, and now they're back under the roof again. Some are helping them pay off federally insured loans. So it's kind of a worry wart time of your life for many people. And so it isn't that your alumni parents don't like you or don't appreciate the experience their kids have, it's just a lot of them are in that pre-retirement mode. So it's not unusual to have this finding. Here's the support, again, by past voting behavior. This is the same as the line graph you saw, essentially. This is the response based on household income. One of the interesting things on this particular finding is... It varies across the district, and you don't always understand for sure why it varies as it does. I did a study similar to this in Richfield, for instance. Strongest support came from the people on the low end of the income range. So it does vary. I would say, generally speaking, for most school districts, the stronger support is on the right side of the chart, but there are exceptions. This is support based on education level. It's a high school on the left. But notice on some of these charts, on the bottom, that there's an error of measurement that's not 5.1, it's some other number. And the reason for that is, in this particular case, we had this information data point for 236 people, not 350 people. And so as the number goes down a little bit, the error of measurement goes up a little bit. But it's still interesting to kind of see the trends.
Do they tell you in the interview their education level or this is information you had obtained previously?
We obtained it before we started. This particular question is one we've used hundreds of times, and essentially, it's saying, I would not vote for any tax increase of any kind, for any reason, in any amount. And then we ask people, do you agree with that statement, or do you disagree with that statement? And this provides a good indication of whether we're in a, you know, a really hostile, impossible market, if you will, tax climate. I presented a study like this at a suburban district, and 40% agreed with that statement. That doesn't make it easy to adequately fund your schools. And so we're basically looking to see, how do you compare with kind of the norm? And most of the time, we see somewhere in the 18 to 25% range is normal for, you know, agreeing with that statement. So I'm looking at the blue and the orange. So you're in that range, generally speaking. We did test the same thing in 2013, and the tax climate in 2013 was a little better than it currently is. Now, one of the things that you're really detail-oriented that you'll notice is that in this particular case, the percentages on this bar chart are different than this. And the reason for that is, this includes a low response. See the bottom of that grid? Over here, we're only showing you what people said who responded. So that's why those percentages will be a little bit different. And as was the case in 13, the vast majority, you know, two-thirds plus, don't agree with that statement. They're going to take a look at the merits of the proposal and decide on that. We also provided them with two facts about funding in Montomede, and asked people, knowing that, how that affected their thinking about a request for an increase. So fact one was that this district gets $1,200 less per student every year than the metro average. And fact two is if the state of Minnesota had based their per pupil funding at the rate of inflation, you would have $600 more per student today. So they reacted to those two statements, essentially saying, would knowing that make you... you much more likely to be supportive, unlikely, or where on that scale? And the $1,200 factoid, you can see it's sitting at, what, 53%? It'd make people much more likely, or likely. And interestingly, the $600 figure was a little stronger than that, about 58%. Both resonated well, you know, over 50%. The $600 figure, a little better. We also, again, use the Phi Delta Kappa Gallup Now-Langer probe, that's been done for almost 60 years. You're the teacher for the day, give your local public schools a grade, A, B, C, D, F. And as Mottamidiye has done in the past, you have excellent response to that probe. Now remembering, 70% of the people who responded don't have kids in school. So to generate 68% in that A and B is very, very good. This gives you three comparison points. At the top, you're seeing 2018, the survey we just did. Right below that, you see the response from 2013. And then right below that, you see the Phi Delta Kappa Langer response. Now, keep in mind, with the Phi Delta Kappa Langer comparison, they did not ask people what their opinion was about the public schools in the country. They asked them what their opinion was about their local public schools. Same question that people responded to in the survey we did. And as you can see, much, much better than the national, very, very strong. The other thing we looked at is the ratio of very high grades to very low, and yours is huge. What was the basis for the grade you gave? Experience of children, experience as a student, were the two big ones, as you can see on this pie chart. We also asked people to give a grade, A, B, C, D, F, for how you're doing managing your money as a school district. This was also very good. You can see it's 61% in the A and B range. And this is a comparison to 2013, which was positive. The most recent survey is in the blue on the top. Participants were also asked if they agreed with this statement. Mottamidiye School District can be trusted to manage money properly. And here, you're looking at 69%, strongly agreeing or agreeing. And here's your comparison to 2013. Both strong. Remember, the blue is this year, the orange is 2013. How do we do on planning for the future? 70% giving you a B. In terms of some summary information to hopefully help you with planning, initial support to that uninformed benchmark at the beginning of the study was 58. After people got information, both negative and positive information about consequences, it jumped up to 64. And as I mentioned earlier, that change was greater than the margin of error. Response was a little bit more positive to positive consequences as compared to negative consequences. And in terms of all the things that were tested, it was quite uniform, as you remember on both of those charts. Here is the support level at some preliminary tax impacts that were tested. Ranging from 49% to 59%. This is just a quick summary of what groups provided the strongest level of support, and which groups were comparatively lower. Although comparatively lower, in many cases, was still over 50%. In terms of our planning recommendation, what we're suggesting, based on our analysis of the data, is to focus in that $135 to $140 range. That's not dollars per pupil, that's increase in property taxes. And based on where we're at today, based on these results, that should put you in a feasibility area that gives you a reasonable chance to be successful. Now, does that mean that you couldn't ask for $150 and win? No, that does not mean that. Does it mean that you, if you asked $125, that you couldn't lose? No, you could. This is a planning range, not an absolute precise number. And I'll just give you one concrete example, so you don't forget that. A hundred years ago, when I was superintendent of schools here, we ran a bond referendum for an auditorium, a new middle school, expanding O.H. Anderson, upgrading the old Wildwood. Everything was going wrong beautifully, until the Monday before the election. And the Monday before the election was Black Monday. Now, if you heard the news today, they were talking about the stock market plummeting Black Monday, it plummeted 23%. And then, the next day, Tuesday, when people voted, it dropped again, and we lost that referendum, I think by 12 or 13 rolls. So, you know, this is data from March elections in November. So there's, you know, stuff happens in between, sometimes really, really positive stuff, and sometimes not. So we believe, based on our analysis, that this is a good range to work with. And if you stay in that range, you've got a decent chance to be successful. And the further north you go, you know, the more difficult it will be. So I'll stop there, and see if there are questions.
We will be getting additional information of the detail.
The slide that really was impactful, there were lots of good ones here, but the one that, page 45. So the question I would have is the info from the district. This is, you know, the grading and where they're getting their information from to grade the district. Info from the district, would that include the globe and things like that? And so the TV, radio, newspaper would again be TV, radio, and newspaper, like, such as the White Press? Fair assumption?
St. Paul Pioneer Press, or Tribune to a lesser extent?
But what, just the social media, 23%? And...
Of course, that experience as a student.
What's that?
That's the 23% experience, because it goes around this way. Social media is the...
I might have the wrong, I'm colorblind here, actually.
See, friends, I don't see the social media, I don't see social media on there.
What's that, 0%? See that 0% ticking off the side?
Zero.
That finishes that account.
So what does that make you think of social media now? All that time.
I don't think that's the point, that it doesn't work. I think the point is that that's how people get their information about the district.
No one's getting it from social media?
That's what this slide suggests.
So they're not getting your Twitter?
Podcasts especially. That's very concerning.
One of the things I'd remind you about is, I told you that late this afternoon, we finished the detailed analysis? So when you get a chance to look at that, how do you think 18 to 24-year-olds respond to that question? So you're going to see significant differences based on demographics. How did parents respond versus people who are 65 and up? So there'll be a lot of much more detailed information when you get to that report.
So in that report, for the grade, the slide we just looked at, is that broken down like PDK does with parents, grandchildren, you know?
You'll be able to look at that by parent status, by age, by gender.
Okay, okay.
But I don't think grandparents necessarily.
I can't, I don't think PDK does grandparents. I don't think PDK's main classifications were. But it's clear that parents tend to rate the schools much higher as they get closer to where their kids went.
I thought so.
Right.
They'll be able to look at all demographics.
Okay, great, thank you.
Before you go down, a couple of questions here. About how much revenue would $135 to $140 generate?
That's a question for Bill or Stacy.
I can take that one. When we went over the three scenarios on February 22nd, we presented an $800,000 scenario, a $1 million scenario, and a $1.2 million scenario, and this is new money for the district related to a levy ask. The $800,000 scenario, on an average-priced home, is $127 in new taxes for our taxpayer. So if the recommendation from Springstead is to look in the range of between 135 and 140, that $800,000 scenario that we looked at would actually be a little bit less than that range, but certainly would fit in with your recommendation.
Did you have another question? Anything else?
Thank you. It's a question for the board then. This is a lot to absorb in a fairly short period of time. We don't need to make any decisions tonight. What more information should we be bringing forth in April? We would like to make a decision in May.
So we'll have the report from Springstead. The more detailed report will be sent to us through email soon.
Oh, tomorrow.
Oh, very soon. Okay.
We send it out by 45 today, so.
And you also get to open it.
That'll be about a week.
So maybe that's a question we could answer better, after we have that information, to see if there's something else that we want.
And I think another study session could go over that.
To go over that.
For the qualitative questions, is it a qualitative analysis of that data, or is it just a data dump?
We use an analytical software called Wordstat. And there are two things from that, in terms of the report back. You get a narrative summary showing you what themes were most commonly expressed. So people loved the high academic scores, and that was the biggest bar. So you see the elements that people talked about in their responses, and the preponderance of each. And then the Wordstat also goes in there and looks for relationships, which is kind of interesting. So you end up with a bubble chart. So you might end up with a bubble over here that talks about high academics, and there'll be a little bit of a line over here that will say, "Great teachers." And based on the analysis of the comments, people in their mind were linking the two. So those are the two things you'll get. So if you're a visual learner, you'll have your bubbles, and if you like to read stuff, you'll have that. And in terms of a work session, or additional help moving forward, you know, if you need me or want me, just give a holler. Thank you.
Superintendent Surge.
Patty's been working with us, and she is here tonight, which is fabulous. She did send an email out today, and so I think many of us have the printed copy of the position. It would be really great if tonight we could nail this down before we leave, so it can be posted. Patty?
Thank you. This afternoon, I do have extras if you don't have it, but I sent a draft of the brochure for each of you to take a look at. I have had people inside the district that... Had some people in the district also take a look at it too, for accuracy, to make sure that the numbers were accurate. So we want to make sure that some of those things are. Now, what I want you to take a look at is really look at it to see if there are some changes that you would like. And if you could possibly have the changes to Lucy, so we're not all individually emailing me the changes, then that way, she can group them together, take a look at them, and then send them my way. If you feel that, like a picture, you would like to see a different picture, I will work with the technology, people, your communications, people to look for other pictures if you'd like. If you like something set up differently, we can certainly do that. What also I would really like to get narrowed down to is the calendar for the interviews. Thanks to Laura with her help, we were able to take a look at, looking at interviews, the first round of interviews. It sounds like the board members would be available on May 7th and May 9th. From 5:30 to 9:00 would be the board members' availability. That's not saying that we wouldn't start earlier, but that's when we would be able to make sure that you are. What we would then be looking at is a second round of interviews, when you would be available. We're looking at narrowing that down, possibly to three, so we want to make sure that we do have enough room for three candidates, if we need it. At least an hour apiece, and then also a little bit of time at the end for board discussion. So that is something that we would like to have narrowed down, if possible. Have it on your website, and then be able to also have the second interview, or the final interview, on here too. What it does is it gives the candidates the opportunity to pencil in, and they know when the first round and the second round of interviews would possibly be.
So you want to try and pick those now, since we're all in the room? Laura did a very good job trying to get us together on that. We are a difficult group.
Like, the second round didn't go so well.
The second round did go so well, as we'd hoped. Part of it is the timing. In the spring, I know Judy and I both already have vacation plans, and we don't pick the same week. We picked back-to-back weeks, which just really interrupts that whole timeline, I think, is the biggest challenge we have. And I'm sorry, but I'm going on vacation. I think Judy has the same. Apologies, but yeah, we're going. So Patty, do you remember what days we were looking at? Could we go back and look at the first ones? Or Laura, do you have those dates?
I think it was probably the 18th, Saturday, or 19th. Okay, that's right. The thing that I want you to keep in mind, and I said this at the very beginning, this is your search. And the most important thing is, is for you to hire the superintendent. We can adjust this calendar. The most important thing is to make sure that every single board member is going to be here on the 26th of April, where you will be reviewing the candidates to bring forward. And then, making sure that you would be available, May 7th and 9th, from 5:30 to 9:00 for the first round. And then, the second round is up to you, finding a date that works for all of you.
Friday, the 18th or 19th, it works for me. Those are the ones that you had thrown out, right? So those are fine by me.
It's graduation at my day job, on the 19th. And so I've got ceremonies 18th and 19th, and MSBA on the 18th. Kevin, do you remember for the spring MSBA meeting, how late that goes on that second day?
On the second day, well, you go down Thursday.
Right, I go down Thursday.
And they're done at noon or so on Friday.
On Friday, okay.
And then here in St. Peter's, you've got bright time. bright time. What time on the eighteen?
Five-thirty to eight.
Yeah, I'm not
The second day, it was eight-thirty in the morning to eleven. I'm available.
And I think you were too, right Stacy?
I'm sorry, sit down with him.
But the two days Friday is that?
Yes, 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 sorry, I kept looking further.
It's two days, they want, you want, okay. Not just one of the two, but both.
Oh, we actually need, we only need the one day. We only need the one day for the second interview because the second interview will only be with the board.
It's three, yeah.
Up to three. It might, it might be after the first interview, the board decides that they would like to narrow it down to two. Typically, it is about two or three, but we want to make sure that we have room for three. And if you decide that it does, you do want to go down to two, then we'll just shrink it. But we just want that time available, blocked out.
Okay. Don't you think five-thirty to eight o'clock on a Friday night is a very undesirable time to interview future superintendent? Because it doesn't seem like the optimal time to me.
Okay. Actually, they prefer nights a lot of times because they've got the full-time job. They're dealing with a lot of things. And then it just gives them a little bit more time to prepare coming up for the interview. And the people that I have been speaking to are very, very interested in this position. And when I had, I chatted with them and I said to them that more than likely these interviews are going to be in the evening. And we're trying to find dates that accommodate the board too. And it could end up being into the evening, it could be a Friday night. And the ones that I have spoke to, they're, they're open. They're saying absolutely, we will be here whenever the board is available.
I like that Friday night one.
I'm putting doctoral students that night.
Oh, it's not even an option.
I'm putting that night and I've got two graduation ceremonies the next day. So I'm wondering if we can look at, we have the first set set for the seventh and eighth. If we push those back a week, can we use the seventh, or I'm sorry, seventh and ninth? If we use the ninth or the seventh for the second interview, is there a way to push the first interview? Or is that going to crunch our timeline too much Patty, based upon?
It is going to possibly because they have a writing piece that they're going to be doing. And if we have some individuals that end up applying towards the end and then they're going to have to rush to get the writing piece done, we're putting maybe a little bit of pressure on them to have everything completed is the concern that we have. And not giving you proper time to review the interview, or the videos too would
If we can go back in the timeline for just a second, the twelfth is when the application closes. Right? Friday, April twelve?
Thursday.
It says Friday, April twelfth on here, so it should be Thursday.
It's going to be, I think
I realize that, but on the flyer, it says Friday, the twelfth. So this will have to be corrected.
Oh, yes. I'm like, where does that say that?
Yeah, thank you. So it's Friday, the thirteenth, we're closing, oh, that's an omen.
We do have the twelfth out there.
Okay, it should be Thursday, the twelfth. Okay, so we're going to close on the twelfth. And then there's a lot of work to be done in terms of paper review and putting the binders together. So we need some time for that.
And what we want to do is deliver the packets to you by Friday, the twentieth. So you have plenty of time to review the information in the booklets. And then taking a look at April twenty-sixth to narrow down the candidates.
For your study session.
And that would be at one of your board work sessions.
So it's the smaller group does the videos. So after they're notified after the twenty-sixth, then those candidates that we've narrowed to go in and do the interviews and the writing sample.
The writing sample is what we have been doing is we're going to give them, we're going to give them, all of them. As the interview, the reason is, is if we needed to increase this a little bit or compact it a little bit, we will have that completed. So everyone that I have spoken to, we have said that there is going to be a writing piece that they will have to do.
So the writing piece will be done, so they would not be rushed on the writing piece?
No.
So the videos would be done?
The only thing.
So we give the candidates a short time for the videos and us a short time to review the videos?
It's a short time for you both to review it.
But when we narrow, that first narrowing is to how many candidates again?
We're going to possibly narrow it down to six. It's going to be five.
We'll have five or six videos to watch and what's the average length of the videos?
There, each question is about three minutes and we ask them three to four questions. So you're going to be sitting at the computer for about an hour reviewing the videos. Now the thing is, is what is very nice about that is you can do it at your leisure as long as you're in front of a computer. You will have access to that. So it doesn't mean that you have to do it as a group.
Right.
So back to the time of meeting. Is it my understanding that there's two vacations that are kind of straddled?
That weekend in question?
So, I mean, this might not be a popular decision, but I'd be willing to do a Sunday afternoon.
Judy, do you leave the twentieth or the twenty-first?
Perfect, girl, we would have left the nineteenth, but
I know.
We would have left on the twentieth, I don't know if that could change or not.
Okay. I can try.
I Do you have another unpopular thing with Saturday night? I mean, it sounds like we really
She's got graduation.
Is at night.
We've got one during the day and one at night. I'm looking up the daytime, time to see if we could do before that. I don't know what time the ceremonies are, I just have the whole day booked out.
And Lucy, when do you take off on your trip?
The eleventh, mhm.
Okay. So, yeah. Okay. If you have time, it's going to depend on the board. You will have the videos, we'll have them completed by the May first. We'll have the candidates, we will let them know. And I've been preparing them too ahead of time that, you know, what kind of the process is. If they have them completed, if you know that you have to review them and it's going to take you about an hour to complete it, we can then shorten that up like Lucy said, and try to condense it and meet earlier and then have the second interview on May ninth.
And then we're going to have another, one more date before the seventh.
First? Or two?
Well
Because the first interview is two days.
Does this make sense?
You would need
Too close to the second's
Well, here's, you've got a good question there. The one reason that we wanted the second interview a little bit later is because we were going to be doing the comprehensive background check. And the comprehensive background check takes about seven to ten days. Now we will have most of the criminal piece of it completed. What takes the longest is the verification of the, yeah, the academic piece of it. That's what it takes. That's why we needed that a little bit of time. Now, we will have a lot of it completed. You will probably be then deciding on a candidate pending the outcome of a criminal background check. Okay?
So then do we need to find two dates?
You would actually need to find one more date because if we then look at, if everybody's available May ninth, we could use that as the second interview. And then we could do the seventh for the first interview, but then we would need another day. Because I think it's going to be kind of hard if you tried to do six interviews all in one day.
Oh, yeah.
That's going to be
Be seeing yourself come in and go in.
Would it make sense though to look to the week of May thirtieth? Sorry, April thirtieth, I've got the way this runs. To look at April thirtieth and find two nights that week to do all the initial interviews, the first round that week and then pick one of those days, either the seventh or the ninth for the second round? Do you think we can find two dates? Could we do the thirtieth and the second on?
Should we just start with the thirtieth and go around?
Yep.
Yes, for me, Mike.
I'm looking, I think so, yes.
Lucy, yes?
Yes, I can do the thirtieth.
Thirtieth and the second?
Thirtieth.
Let's just do the thirtieth.
The thirtieth.
The thirtieth, good for me.
Okay. Let's go with that.
Second.
Good for me.
Second's okay for me.
Yeah, good for me.
I think it's a nine-sixteen meeting, but I'll bail on that.
So if we took the April thirtieth and May second to do first round interviews? And then I guess a break between would be important. And then we could choose the seventh or the ninth because we also have a board meeting on the tenth.
Seventh then, split them up.
Then Patty, does that sound okay to you?
Okay. Could you repeat the
So April thirtieth and May second, the Monday and Wednesday, to do first round interviews, so we could do three each night. Then May seventh, or, yeah, May seventh, Monday, May seventh, to do the second round of interviews. We could hold the ninth if we needed to in case there's scheduling difficulties since we already have our calendars. We're planning not to use it at this point. And then we have a board meeting on the tenth. And then have board work two nights each of those weeks. Well, if you're doing Walk in My Shoes simulation, three nights out of the week.
That sounds like a plan.
Yes. So on May thirtieth, excuse me, on April thirtieth and May second, what are the dates that you would be available? Are the times?
Five to eight or five-thirty to
Five to eight.
Five to eight or five-thirty.
Five-thirty.
Yeah, five-thirty.
Five-thirty's better.
Five-thirty's better, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, five-thirty.
That's okay with everybody.
Yep.
To eight or eight-thirty or whatever.
Okay, it'd be closer to nine. By the time you leave. May second? Same thing. Okay.
And then the final, May seventh? And we will keep the May ninth open just to have?
I think that's important for flexibility, should something come up with candidates. It could snow, it's May. So if we kept it and we didn't use it, it's easier to cancel. As you can tell, it's hard to get us together. Which is a sign of a busy board, okay. That's done.
Good.
So for this flyer, feedback's going to come to me. What's the timeline for feedback? Do you think you get to me by Saturday and I can get it out? Can you get, yeah, tonight would be great, but
I have a question though.
Okay. Can we spend a couple of minutes on it and then you can send me other general feedback if we want to do questions?
Do, should we spend time on it right now? Give him, if it's quick.
I don't, Lucy, I don't think, unless I don't know if Lucy will be able to I mean, the question is on the first page on the bottom where it talks about the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen annual budget of sixty-two-point-two million dollars. Where did that, we're kind of, Bill and I were kind of trying to work through where that number might have come from.
I think I got it from your website, but I was going to also have him take a look at that too.
Okay.
I wish that was our budget.
Our next agenda item would be off the agenda. I, if I could just quickly, I think what that might be is all funds combined.
Yes.
Including our internal service fund, community education fund, our service. Our general fund is in the neighborhood of forty million.
Yeah. This was your annual budget with every, all your funds together.
So can I ask one more question? I know that April twenty-sixth was badly developed, that's not going to be one of those times. Correct.
April thirtieth.
Right.
April twenty-sixth, we're choosing
The candidates.
To move forward.
It's a board meeting.
Yeah, I've got a conflict that night. My daughter's getting confirmed at the cathedral and so
All the bishop and change.
So you won't be at the board meeting?
I probably will not be there, no. Oh, I won't be there. But I trust your judgment if you're all there.
Any other comments on the flyer?
Yeah.
Quick comments?
I don't know why everybody thinks it's okay to use comma and then have that word and after it. Could you review that? And I know that there's
I don't think we need to go through a language lesson, yeah.
No, no, I think just
I'll give you these, I'll give you my comments.
I'm not giving a language lesson, I'm just asking if they could just review that.
Okay, so Kevin?
I'm amazed.
Yep.
Here. Is that over time? Again, is that something you saw on the website?
I pulled off of the website, that's why I need you guys to take a look at that and
So, but again, I can give you that detail, but is it, is it over time that you're using?
It was over time.
Okay, all right, good.
And if you choose not, if you want me to use some other language, please let me know.
So if you'll send feedback
Also that's a Lucy.
To me.
Just send it all to Lucy.
I'll consolidate it all. If I need to, I'll meet with Dr. Larson to clarify some points and then we'll ship it off to Patty hopefully by Monday morning.
Yep, that would be great.
Even the feedback about the salary range, do you want all of us to come up with our own salary range idea?
That was
No, I think that's a placeholder because you want to
This is a placeholder, right.
So let's decide salary range and move on?
I mean, that's sort of saying, like, we talk about that. Because she asked for feedback on the salary range.
Right.
Of what the salary range would be.
From other districts, comparables? We have the nine-sixteen data, I have it in my binder.
Yeah, but I'm
But can we, can we put in general language at this point that says competitive, comparable, you know? Could you draft that language and send it?
We can.
That'd be great.
I think that's better. And that's why we need to have this discussion is, did you want that? That's why this was only in there for a placeholder for now. Because you're not sure what kind of experience or education level that they are going to have. So that is something that the board is going to need to discuss down the road.
You can do that down the road.
Oh, yes.
But for this, we could just state competitive.
Absolutely. Mhm, okay. No, 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 no. Well, I just take the low and the high, that's my range.
That wasn't, that wasn't the point.
Nope. All right. Patty, anything else on the search that we need to handle this evening?
Nope, I just wanted to, nothing more on this. I wanted to give you an update that Kelly Smith and I have been out recruiting. We have had many meetings with individuals that are interested or potential interested in the position. We have a bunch next week also that we're sitting down with wanting a little bit more information. So the sooner that you can get this information back to us, the better off. And then the other thing is, as soon as this is completed, we have a letter going out to I think it's about six to eight hundred letters that are going to be going out next week also. Thank you.
Thank you.
So much, thank you. All right.
Bill? Budget reductions.
Good evening. In your board pack and up on the screen, you will see the two thousand eighteen, nineteen preliminary budget. My name is on the agenda item as a discussion item and my charge as the Director of Business Services Services is to come up with the revenue expenditure and fund balance projections. And so that's what I've done here. But it would be misleading to say that this is one person doing this document. This is really a group made up of building administration, district administration, and central office staff. So that's, that's what you really do see here. Just by way of table of contents, I plan to go through the introduction. So table of contents, item one, also items two and three. The original 18-19 budget forecast, when we started looking at this in detail on January 4th, and then the revised 18-19 budget, which you will see here tonight. So I will go through items one, two, and three. Dr. Larson will take item four, which is really the meat and potatoes of our programming recommendations for tonight, included for discussion tonight, and then action at the next meeting on April 12th. And then, if need be, I can finish with some supplementary information to include the dreaded enrollment analysis and some other class size information, and, and then we'll finish with the timeline as we usually do. Just by way of an introduction, I'll just highlight some, some items here. So as you recall, we started looking at the forecast for next year at the regular board meeting on, on January 4th. And at that time, we presented the board with the $1.6 million deficit forecast for next year, that we've kind of worked with all along and tried to chip away and work away at that $1.6 million deficit figure. And so, the document and the work that we've completed since January, you're going to see here tonight, and then really the focus again here on April 12th, sort of the light at the end of the tunnel, if you will, from a budget standpoint, is after April 12th, when we seek action on some, some contracts and, and also some programming recommendations. The decisions for the general fund budget for next year are substantially complete from a preliminary standpoint after the April 12th meeting. What I'll do then is package everything up. We have to fold in the non-major governmental funds, things like food service, community debt service, things like that, that we haven't talked about yet, just because we've spent so much time in the general fund, as we should be. I'll package all that up, we'll have those discussions, and then put everything together for the June 14th meeting, when we'll bring the formal budget for approval for next year. So that's kind of the light at the end of the tunnel. And then just some, some verbiage here, obviously, this has been difficult. This has been difficult on the school board, been difficult on administration, staff, and the community. And I'm just, just hoping and folding in some of the operating levy conversations that we've had moving forward, that some of the difficult work here can better position the district to be in a position where we can have some of those conversations, sort of the opportunity part moving forward. So again, looking at the original budget forecast from January. This is the document that was included in the January 4th board packet, and I want to constantly revisit this. It is a busy slide, and we don't need to look at every line item on here. For our purposes, I'd like to focus specifically on the general fund unassigned category. So you'll recall, we're looking at the 18-19 fiscal year, so July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019. So this estimated fund balance column here, the beginning fund balance for 18-19 is really the ending fund balance for the revised budget in 17-18, our current year. Okay? So that's really where that figure comes in. And in January, we were projecting preliminary budget revenues of $35.3 million, and you'll recall, that was based off of not adding any students from this year, keeping the same 3,248 students next year as we had this year. And then we were forecasting preliminary budget expenditures of the $36.9 million, which takes into, or factors in zero budget adjustments, zero reductions on the expenditure side. This is the $1.6 million that we're familiar with, the estimated fund balance at the end of June 30, 2019, and the resulting unassigned fund balance percentage. So I want to pause here on fund balance percentage and make sure I keep driving home the point that we've talked about regarding our fund balance and the fund balance policy. As you'll recall, Fund Balance Policy 714 says that the school district will strive to maintain a minimum unassigned general fund balance of at least 8%. So you'll recall, we ended last year, 2016-17, at 8.1%. The revised budget that we approved in December of this year, December 2017, has us dropping just below 6%. So nothing that we presented for next year has us recouping fund balance to get up to 8%. I just want to make sure that that's abundantly clear, that we are not making either revenue adds in terms of student recommendations or expenditure reductions to recoup that and get back to 8%. And for that reason, that's why we really folded in that fund balance policy into the levy scenarios and options, as sort of a way, or a mechanism to, to in the long term, get back to that percentage per policy. Does that make sense? Okay. So I'll show this graph, and then we'll show the next one, which includes many, much of the work that's been done since January. Sarah Dusick mentioned this. We worked, or the Q Comp group worked very hard on decreasing the general fund subsidy for Q Comp. We've had some labor settlements that come in. We have an early retirement incentive in the contract. And then some other reductions of expenditures for next year. And I, I should note that the changes and adjustments made since January are projected to balance the general fund budget for next year. What you see here is a balanced budget, actually a slight surplus projected for next year. Now, it has been quite some time since I have recommended, or I get the feeling that the school district has gone through things like an early retirement incentive, the amounts of retirements that we're projecting for next year, and some of the expenditure reductions that you're going to see tonight. For that reason, we are using our best estimates on this information. I, it would be missed, it would be amiss on my part if I told you that I would know the exact impact of this early retirement incentive and the related retirements. These are our best estimates, and that's why you have a preliminary budget approval required in June, and then you have a revised budget in December, or halfway through the fiscal year. So I want to give that disclaimer. We are going to, on the next page, get into the reductions in, in programming that lead to a balanced budget. But before we get into that, I'll just go over the specifics. So again, looking at the same chart, you'll see the same starting figure for an unassigned general fund balance of that $2.3 million. What we've really done here to, to recoup or balance the budget on that $1.6 million is we're recommending increasing enrollment by approximately 40 students for next year, spread throughout the grades, recommending going from the 3248 to the 3288, which was the school board target. That's the revenue figure that we've built the budget on here, is the 3288. And then on the expenditure side, we've made some programming changes, and then factored in some of the Q Comp changes, labor settlements, some other reductions, such that the increase in income, or the increase in revenue related to the student count, and the decrease in expenditures related to the retirements and some other programming changes that, that the district is recommending, the administration's recommending. We have a balanced budget here and a projected unassigned fund balance as of the end of 18-19 of 6.2%. Okay? So the logical next step is to go through the details on the programming changes that feed into this budget.
So the programming changes that are coming below is fed into this to get to the 6.2?
Exactly. They're factored in, in here. So it's a little bit of a cart before the horse, but for simplicity purposes, because I showed the January 4th projection on the second slide, I thought it'd be helpful to show the, a similar slide here on the third slide. And now I'll turn it over to Dr. Larson to go over the programming recommendation and changes for next year.
Before that, any other questions on the budgets that, that were presented?
So, our 714 policy is still at 8%, but even next year, we finish at 6.22. Are we still aiming for 8%? I mean, is that, we're still going to be below, so it's still going to impact programming even next year, no new programming and, and things like that?
Well, yeah.
Right. But is it a board desire still to strive for that 8%? And should we, should we be making more progress towards that 8%? Are we satisfied with 6.22?
I think it's too early to make that decision right now, but I think we should be satisfied with 6.22 right now, and get, eventually get back up, but not this year.
I think I concur with that. It sounds like that was your recommendation, too, that we're going to just live with this for one year until we can get back to it.
That, if I could, so I always try to bet things through the eyes of our external audit. The policy is really a guideline. If we are outside of our policy parameters, as we would be here, and as I expect us to be at the end of this fiscal year, that doesn't show up as an audit finding, it will be brought up as a recommendation by the auditor, but doesn't show up as a finding in our audit report. So that's one factor. Another one, I, I do like the 8% as a threshold. I think that that's, between four and five weeks of operating expenditures, I think is a good practice, for a lot of the reasons that we've talked about. However, when we looked at sort of balancing the budget, there were enough changes, both on the revenue and expenditure side, just to get this thing balanced, that, that really building fund balance all in one year, the impact on programming, in my opinion, would have been very significant, or even more significant.
More significant than what we've already done.
Than what you're going to say.
Right. But I mean, we have board policy, so I just want to make sure the whole board was comfortable with the 6.22, because it's not a finding, but it is, you know, going to be brought, it's less than what we have put forward as our projection. I agree with what Bill is saying, in terms of concerns about the impact of the budget, but we are making a choice here. I just want to make sure we're all okay with the choice that we are making.
What's the option?
The policy says 8%.
How much more would we have to cut?
Well, but it's not only cuts, remember, because it's-
I'm just asking for the number.
Yep.
To get to 8%.
Using general figures, 1% looks to me to be about $300,000. So to, to cut from 6.22 up to 8, you're, about $500,000. Adjustments, either on the revenue side, the expenditure side, or a combination.
Right. Because the other piece is the revenue side, and when we did our district target number, we sort of landed in the middle of the recommendations that Dr. Larson brought forward. And we even said that night that we could revisit that number. And so if we were to revisit that number, how many more students would we have to change our target number to make that same 8%? I'm sorry, Bill, I'm really putting you on the spot tonight.
Let me repeat the question to make sure I understood it correctly. How many students would we need to add over the projection of 3288 in order to balance this thing without making additional reductions?
No, to, to reach the 8%.
Using round figures, and all these are round figures.
Right, they're all round figures.
We've, we've talked in terms of each student is plus or minus about $10,000 in revenue, using five, between $5,000 and $600,000 to get to that 8%. If you were to try to do it in one year, you're talking about upwards of 50 or, or a few more students.
A few more.
Yeah.
Well, if I recall, 3411 was the number that we'd have, we could, if we hit 3411, we wouldn't be having a conversation about cuts or anything, if we went that high up, because-
That's brought up a good point. So my error there is I'm just talking about straight revenue. If you add 50 more students, you're going to add expenditures, too. So it's, it's probably going to be more.
Do you have a slide that shows what's been done and what's not been done? I mean, you've got retirements and reduction, you know, we've got, okay, building, district administration, expenditure impact. So we've got retirements, that's taken care of, right?
I think Dr. Larson's going to go over that in the next three slides.
Well, I just want to know what that number would be without adding all the reductions that's on the next page down.
I think some are initiated and some aren't. Is that the question you're asking?
Correct.
Right, and that's what Dr. Larson's going to cover now as he looks at those next slides.
All right. And I'm going to try and-
He's asking, what have we already done? What haven't we done?
In, in terms of, so, having said all of that, then, the next page here, as you can see, I'll go a little bit in detail. The idea in kindergarten is that we would make no change, and that was because we would have about the same enrollment of students. Ideally, we would have about 185 to 189. I believe we started the year at 189. We're down to 182 students. And if we projected to be at 185, that'd be a plus three. Class size would be about 20.6. So we would not make any recommendations there. However, kindergarten is the one place, getting at the question you were asking about how many students, is the place where we could take them the most easily. That's where we have the largest number of students who have been applying for open enrollment. First grade is very similar to that, in which we also have a significant number of students who have applied. We've already accepted many of those students, and many of them are coming. We're going to be looking at 198. And if we were to have eight sections, it would be about 25 in a class. And so that's, that's a large number for first grade students. In second grade, we are talking about reducing one section, and that would put us at 200, 193 students. So just a few less, but it would be class sizes of 27.5. That is quite a lot in second grade. I'd also say that's quite a lot in first grade. In order to get those class sizes down, we would have to take more students then, and that would be, using the numbers that we've been using here, about seven to 10 students would equal about an FTE. And so you could do that if you had those kind of numbers. The numbers that we have here stay within the board parameters at that time of 3288 students. Actually, it looks a little bit higher than that, but we didn't have all of our students accept, and we're expecting some attrition with that.
And we haven't accounted for move-ins, right?
No.
And so the 3288 we're targeting right now assumes a zero-sum gain over the summer?
Right. Yep.
Which has never happened?
No, it's never happened. We've often lost students in the secondary, and so we would be expecting to get more students in the summer, but we're not billing a budget on phantom students. And so that's where that problem comes in. As much as we wish we could be exact on it, we simply are unable. So at Wildwood, it's 1.0 FTE reduction in second grade. The second recommendation is a specialist in Spanish, and that's a 1.0 reduction there. Spanish is the elementary specialist, that there are no state mandated standards. We have music standards that we have to meet, or students have to meet. We have art and media and physical education, but not in Spanish. And so that's part of the rationale on that recommendation.
Oh, Mark, can I ask a question about that? What are the specialists, all the specialists that, in Wildwood? What are the, I mean, Spanish is one, but what are, what are they, all the specialists? The category, what is it?
There are five, there are five specialists. One is art.
Art.
Music.
Uh-huh.
Fayed.
Fayed.
Media.
Uh-huh.
And Spanish.
And Spanish is the only one that doesn't have some sort of a state dictate?
That's right.
Art has a state, and mu, and, okay. So that's why that's being targeted?
Yes.
Parents know about this? I mean, have people been reached out to in the public that have their children in Wildwood that?
You've been receiving emails.
I, I know. But I don't know if anybody's been calling the parents or getting any kind of input from them, and I've received the emails, yeah.
I don't mean to get ahead, so if you're getting there, then just say so. Since that second grade class, students per class jumps, that's pretty high, and I thought our parameters we set two weeks ago were to, to be as close as possible below the metro average. Is there a possibility that there's some students in second grade on the waiting list for open enrollment that would change that? I know you just said eight to 10 students would change that equation. Is that even in the realm of possibility?
Not in second grade. We don't have them there for that. But if we were to pick up eight to 10 other students in, say, kindergarten, first, third, fourth, fifth grade, then you could decide that, hey, we've got this additional revenue, this is the biggest pain point, this is the point where we want to put more FTE. So it's not a one-to-one, it doesn't have to be all second graders to join.
Okay.
It could be more students in general.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I should have made that more clear, is that the additional students don't have to be in that grade level to make a staffing change. So I-
How many, how many more can we take in kindergarten?
At least twenty.
Okay, great.
We're not, we're not at that point yet. Let me move on a little bit here.
Let's finish the recommendations. These have been worked on for a very long time by the administrators, the, all the buildings, the, I mean, this is not just a, okay, this is now something to pick and choose, you know?
I know that, but I'm not aware of all the specialists.
Well, and we just received it yesterday, so we haven't, I think Mike's, to Frank's point, it's...
We're working towards this.
We've not seen these numbers until twenty-four hours ago.
The numbers, that is true. That is true.
And we should have had them for a week.
We had this in January, and it's very similar to what we've had here in terms of the recommendations. There are a few changes on it, though, after additional work, so this document has changed. When, when did we get this?
That was Jan...
This is the first time I saw this.
It's hack it in January.
Yes, we haven't had the specifics. We had no specialist...
I'm just trying to ask about the specifics.
Twenty-four hours.
Anywho.
Let's keep moving. Here he has to say.
The option two, as we've mentioned here through this document, has an overall change in specialists and a reduction of one second in grade two, and so that, that has not changed since January. That's evidenced by the document that we have here. For O H Anderson, grade three, no changes. Enrollment, though, will be down a few students there, but again, the class sizes, we felt, would be too much. Grade four, no change, same rationale. Grade five, one FTE reduction. This has huge impacts in terms of class sizes there. We have, this year, we have two hundred forty-three students in nine sections. The next year, we would have two hundred thirty-seven projected and only eight sections, and that means the class sizes in fifth grade would jump from twenty-seven to twenty-nine point six. So that's also quite a jump. The two big pain points in elementary are second grade, which have gone from twenty-four point four students in seventeen eighteen to twenty-seven point five, if all of our projections hold true, and in grade five, it'd go from twenty-seven point zero to twenty-nine point six, again, if all projections hold true. In terms of other reductions, a point two FTE, Spanish reduction. So that's a small reduction there. Our elementary class sizes, the goal was to be within below the metro XU average. These clearly are not. You can see on the next slide over where the class sizes are projected to be and the difference between that and the metro XU. The one plus to that is that third grade is actually below the metro XU average, or excuse me, is below what it was last year. All the other ones are above of what they were last year, excuse me.
So can I just ask a point of clarification? We set a parameter that we didn't meet this year, but we set it for next year? Is that what you're saying? That this year, we were above SQ numbers, and we set a tighter parameter for next year when we're in a budget crisis?
No.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure, that's what it sounded like?
Our, our goal is to be below the metro XU average.
Right, but so this year, are we?
No.
Well, as I'm saying, we set a goal that we're not even meeting this year for next year, in a budget tight year.
Right.
Right, that was not good planning.
We agreed to that, we're in a rock and a hard place.
Okay. But I'm rethinking that now, it's not the best thinking.
So I have a question about that. It seems to me that we're not, we're not even close to the average in the fifth grade class, and so were there other, what were the other options before this choice was made? What other considerations were part of the equation?
Specialist support. When Mike has a question about specialists, we have other specialists, reading specialists and math specialists to provide support, but your question, I think, was about the five that we have here. So we questioned whether or not we should reduce specialists and more specialists, or if we should reduce reading and math support, if we should be looking at PBIS, positive behavior intervention system support, or if we should be looking at just the elimination of specialists. Those were the options that we talked about at the elementary level. And you'll see in a minute that the elementary level, while these are, I think, pretty, pretty tough reductions to recommend and approve, you'll see that the high school and middle school are also hit. In fact, some would posit even more, more hard, harder than the other ones.
Well, I just, I kind of go back to this, or I am going back to the same question that applied with the second grade. Are there open enroll students that are on the waiting list that would change that equation? I'm very concerned that when we're that high over the metro average, we'll have to make a case this fall for a levy, and when you've got, you are that high, it's not even close. We'll be at the very top of the range, so I just think, you know, you've got to look at the full perspective.
That'd be a great case to make, though, for why we need to have that levy pass.
I don't think people will stay if their kids, you can go down the street and have a class of twenty-four. It's significantly different. We won't, not all those open enrollees will then come if they think that they're coming to a district where class sizes are bigger than any other district in the surrounding area.
Those are certainly good points, but we otherwise, we're gonna cut one point six million dollars.
Or I'm asking, are there open enroll students? If you add seven more students in elementary, then you get nine sections back up in fifth grade, because then it takes you back down to that metro average, which is a very different story.
You guys have to answer that question?
Sure answer, yes. There are. There aren't specifically in second grade, there are mostly in kindergarten, and I'm not exactly sure what the other grade levels are, where we have, where we have openings. I'm sorry, Bill?
I was just reiterating, we do have the applications in fifth grade.
I just have one, I'll shut up after this. I'm just curious, so if the Spanish teacher goes down point two, and like the Fayad or teachers at a one, how does that work with the specialist rotation? Does the Spanish teacher teach the same amount of classes as the other specialists? Or how many more classes will students get of art than Spanish, for example?
I believe they'll have the same classes that they've had before, in terms of numbers.
We'll look at, we will figure out that, if you want that level of detail, I could meet with you about some of the scheduling things that we're looking at later on.
I'm just trying to figure out the points here, and all they're moving around and all.
The students will still get the specialist, but it may be specialist for a longer mo... Like, for example, Wildwood has different amounts of times of specialist times, and then O H currently has the same amount of specialist time, but if you change some of this with the point eight and the full time, then sometimes it would be, you know, you might have to team music specialist with art specialist, or, you know, it's just, it's a lot of scheduling.
Shuffling.
Yeah, it would be really difficult for me to explain it right here at the board, but then sometimes if you really want to see that schedule, you can come in and see it, yeah.
The total reductions here are, you can see this column here, it's, they are not broken out by school, they're broken out just all collectively together. You can read them for yourself, but it's counseling, family and consumer science, math and social studies, language arts, science, Spanish art, Spanish, French, Fayad, and music. In addition, it's also coaches, B squad coaches in those eight sports there, or those eight positions, but we would be adding point two FTE in art. I want to spend just a moment on this. What this does is it raises class sizes at the middle school quite a lot. One of the goals that we had about the enrollment was to adhere to the middle school model. These kind of reductions do not adhere to the middle school model. There'd be one team that has five sections on it, which is the middle school model. The other one would have four in sixth grade and in seventh grade. Not a desirable situation. In eighth grade, it would be a full team, and that would be like the middle school model. Among the things that were looked at in this instance were the wheel, in terms of, if you eliminated one of the wheel classes, simple math, there's about two hundred forty students in the wheel. If you have six, if you have four quarters, that's about six, excuse me, if you have, and there's six classes each day, so that you have about forty people there, you break that down, instead of dividing it by six, you divide it by four, you'd end up increasing your class sizes to almost forty. You have eight sections of the wheel, and, Dr. Muebeck, I'm looking to you on this, I think I misspoke on my numbers. You have eight sections of the wheel and about two hundred forty students.
Yeah, right, so we're at about thirty-three percent.
And if we went to trimester, say...
Thirty-fourth class.
Right, and we went to trimesters and eliminated one of those classes, we'd go down to six classes in the wheel, and that means we'd be about forty students. So two hundred forty divided by eight is about thirty, two hundred forty divided by six is forty. So that was something that we looked at and also decided that it wasn't valuable. I mean, it wasn't doable. That was, that may have helped keep a, a few sections here and there, maybe in seventh grade, but, or in sixth grade, but it would not have, it would really have made a real difficult situation by going from thirty to forty. So that was one of the other things that we, that we looked at. We also looked at some of the other classes that we'd have there in terms of reduction of student support. We feel that our most struggling learners need the support, and the other piece of it is there's some funding mechanism, is that special education funding qualifies for different funding. It's about fifty percent, sixty percent of the salary is reimbursed, and that's a total of about half a salary when you put in the benefits as well. So you'd have to cut two special ed, make two reductions in special ed to get the savings of one, one non-special ed FTE. And Lynn, could you speak a little bit to ADSS and some of the other things that we've done, that we considered but did not do?
Right, because ADSS is also similar funding, and you get the reimbursement for the salary part, the sixty percent from the salary piece of it. And once we reduce and we don't use the ADSS funding, we don't get that funding, you know, so then we would be giving it up for the future, you know, and another backup cutting in that. So...
Twice as many staff, and you get, and then you wouldn't be able to bring that back, say, the next year.
Bring the regular...
If there, yes, exactly, if we have some money to actually use to help support the kids that are struggling in math and reading, we wouldn't just be able to automatically bring that back the next year.
In addition, we did not consider reducing the support in English language learners. That was one of the things that we had as a possibility, but did not, not consider that. And then I mentioned all of these things already, and so you saw the secondary pieces right here, the reductions at the district office, the Q comp, which isn't really a district office thing, that's more along the lines of other, and the district management group contract, that's fifty-five thousand. So that's a total of about a hundred and seventy thousand there. All in all, this gets us to, as Bill pointed out earlier, close to where we want to be, but it still does not get us to the eight percent. If we want to look at additional add backs and so forth, I think that's very reasonable to do that. We don't want to do it on phantom students, but if the board is interested in changing some of the parameter pieces about what that would mean, we'd be very pleased to entertain those possibilities. One of the things that, on the surplus on the budget, that's the third page that he showed, that's about a ninety-eight thousand dollar surplus right now. That's a small amount, a hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, but in terms of the whole thing, it can go away pretty quickly. I would recommend that we hold on to that for a little while and see if other pain points manifest themselves besides second grade or fifth grade. There may be something at the high school or the middle school that also works its way up, and if we have a possibility to add some students, and then we could even build that, and then we can take care of some of those other things. So there is some possibility if the board wants to act right now on touching that. I would recommend holding off on the ninety-eight thousand, but we'll do as you suggest, and I'm very open to accepting more students in open enrollment. We can search out those students.
I had a couple of questions about secondary. With eighty, over eighty percent of our students participating in activities, what does it mean that we're cutting all the B coaches? Because I don't understand what that means.
It's not all of them, but it's eight in all. And that, that's a big problem, because a lot of times, kids come to school for the sports, or that's a draw, or that's something that's really important, and it's not a huge expense. I mean, I, I'm not exactly sure what the salaries are. I think it's in the five thousand dollar range.
I have no idea.
But it's, it's not. Pardon me?
On Schedule C?
Yeah, on Schedule C. So, I mean, it's not a huge amount of money.
So, but, but what does it mean? Does it mean you're not gonna have any B squads?
No.
So, but then B squads would be gone, there'd be other teams with B squads left. But, but you're cutting all of the B squads from all of those sports?
Because you want to have a coach, is that right? Because you would need supervision of those students.
Or what does it mean?
What I believe it to mean, and this is why, I could be wrong, so I'm not sure on this, but I thought that there were multiple B squad coaches in these sports, and it was eliminated from, from two to one.
Well, does, does anyone know what it means?
I mean, head shakes from teachers in the audience.
Do you know what it means?
I would have to talk to Ray about it, but I believe, he said there was some B squad or assistant coaches that a lot of teams would have, like their volunteers, or they would fundraise and have that money for that second coach. So I think he was looking at just some of the teams that had, it's not like they wouldn't have any coaches for that level, but it was that one coach. Do you remember, do you remember? I mean, I really can't speak for Ray, he would have to answer that.
The number that we were given for eight coaches is thirty-six thousand, which I realize doesn't answer your question. I didn't get the impression that by reducing the B squad coaches that that sport went away.
Right.
I don't have confirmation of that, but I did not get that impression.
I didn't...
I absolutely could.
We can get that back to you, but we, I don't believe that was the case at all. Certainly.
Yeah, I have another question about, about cutting math teachers and science teachers and adding art teachers.
Well, one of the, one of the issues was with the facts going away, that has to be placed for a student, you know, students to go for some of the electives, and so then that did increase the art classes and some of the other elective classes, and so it was just a bubbling up of, okay, the students need to go someplace to be able to be part of that.
Are there no math electives or science electives or places they could go?
There are some, but they didn't choose necessarily, and some of the math electives and science electives, you know, there's, there's some that still have high numbers in that, in that area, but in this case, it was...
But, so, when we do high school registration, students have to put down three choices. So we went all the way through students' third choice, and we couldn't find a class for them?
They were looking at it across the board, and know that they've been, they've been working very hard on that to try to, to figure out how to balance it, so that, you know, some of the classes, okay, say, they did pick another elective where, okay, great, we can keep the science teacher, whatever. You know, she, she was looking at all of those pieces of it, but she was just noticing that with the, with the art, so it's a point one addition, and they have basically for the art.
Point, point two is where we have?
Well, point two, actually at the high school, but I believe she just went up a point one, because it went, she went down a point one at the middle school, so it was a point one.
Yeah, I have no idea. No, it's not, there's no middle school.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
I, I heard that there might be a change in the lunch and learn model, and I'm wondering if we could, if that's something that you have in your report? I didn't hear what...
No, I don't have my report, but I can speak a little bit to that. The high school's interested in changing that to start the day. So instead of lunch and learn being during lunch, it would start at eight o'clock, and students then would, would do their clubs, their activities, their, what they do during lunch and learn from eight to eight-thirty. This would do two things. One, it would take it out of the lunchroom time, and two, it would make it so that students could sleep a little bit later if that was the issue.
So you could sleep or you could go to activities? That is...
Why did this not come up during our intense study on start time changes?
I find, I'm really shocked that this isn't in there, so this is a budget cut? That lunch and learn is a budget cut, and it's not listed?
I don't know that it to be a budget cut. I know they have staff right now that is paid, like, I think it's a point four to point, to point two positions to operate it. It may be the same thing for the morning.
It's just a different time.
But, you know, the, the issue I see in this is two, or two things. One is a transparency piece, but then secondarily, I don't know when it started, three years ago. But it was, it was like this great new big neat thing that we really, came to us, right? It came, and, and I'm just, I'm hesitant because, you know, to, to fold in after two years because of certain things, and I don't know what the things are, but I'd like to have probably maybe a little bit more thoughtful deliberation on this particular piece, whether it actually is a budget savings or if it's not a budget savings, I mean, it would be nice to...
Well, and it would be nice to know if it's actually part of it, since it's not in our information.
Part of, part of it is because it's, it's really, a social studies teacher was given a point two of his time to actually help oversee the programming of lunch and learn math house. I think he came and spoke a few times about the lunch and learn program. So in order to keep the social studies classes at, I mean, there's still gonna be large classes, but he needed to go back and teach social studies for his full amount of time, so he couldn't oversee the lunch and learn programming pieces of that. And I think they were feeling that without that additional supervision, we really wouldn't be able to have that, you know, strong lunch and learn program that they, they were used to. And that's, you know, that's just what I, what I've heard.
So point two of a teacher causes us to, the amount, the cost of point two of a teacher is about what?
About ten million.
So for ten thousand dollars, we're going to cut an entirely new program that we have found to be very successful.
That provides equity for our kids, that reduces stress, that does all of those things.
I, I think, well, they're looking at the morning piece of it, of maybe not more of a person's lunchtime, but making more of a morning time where they can have a club and.
That goes against what the board asked administration to do around school start time in a sense, because now you're eliminating, kids are having to pick between sleep and activities. We've got kids who this year have moved to online courses first hour, so they could come late, and it was a solution. And so now you've eliminated those kids, you've got to think PSEO, you've got to think, you know, all these other things. With that movement, I don't see any, I mean, I don't see anything about this. I'm surprised to hear this as are my fellow board members with no indication of impact to learners around all of the reasons we adopted that.
Maybe we can request that that be presented at the next meeting.
Right, I think we need to make a.
Let's just table that for now, because right now, we're just review, this is a discussion point of what, what's being done, and let's come back to that and hear the thinking on that and look at it. Get the information.
Yeah, I feel it's really a, a strong program that needs to, you know, have funding towards it. We can look at.
Putting it in there.
Yeah.
Right.
Or perhaps.
If you want to add, you know, take out of that ninety-eight thousand, to add ten or fourteen.
Back, to keep that.
Yeah, if that's the real.
Focus area.
You can increase art, but you can't decrease art, is my understanding, by, by mandate? You can increase art, but you can't decrease art or cut it?
I know.
Right?
No.
Same thing with music and fire.
It's a different.
You can increase it, but not decrease it?
It's a different conversation.
I understand that.
No, no, I think I understand the question.
Spanish can do what you want, because it's not mandated, but media, phys, phys ed, music, art, you can add, 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 but you can't cut, cut, cut.
You can, you can reduce.
Cut if you don't have enough kids. I mean, you can cut if you don't need them. The kids all have to meet the standard.
There's a state standard that you have to have. X amount of credits to graduate. No requirement.
That includes.
Yes.
Can I just go back to the lunch and learn? I don't want it to sound like we are dictating that that has to be put back in at the cost of something else that we are not aware of. I think it was more the lack of transparency to, same words, and just, you know, because small community, so we hear, and since it wasn't in the packet, and again, we didn't have a lot of time to look at this information, so we're still absorbing it all. So I don't want it to be taken as, oh, we're setting, we're setting some specific expectations.
No, but I just wanted people to realize that, yes, if we put that in, that you kind of have to identify where the priorities would be, or do we want to make sure we have enough for another second grade teacher, another fifth grade teacher? It's, it's hard.
Right, right.
All across the board.
I think we.
There's so many good things that were happening in the district, and it's a difficult.
Right, and I think we understand that. It was just this wasn't included.
Yes.
So we heard about it and wondered why it wasn't. I think the other piece of it is, if it were to move to an eight to eight-thirty time, I think we need more specifics on that, because we had this long drawn-out process on changing start times of school, and this was never brought up one time. And so I'd like some more information on that, too.
I think we can get that.
Can I get one thing? I mean, I would like to know what the teachers think of lunch and learn. I mean, I'd like to, you know, is, if, if it's just not a popular thing, I'd like to know that from the staff, because they're the ones that have to do this every day.
And the students, if a student.
And the students, absolutely.
And if, if perhaps the, the framework's in place, isn't there an administrator in the building that could be the person in charge, if Mr. Huss isn't available?
I'll.
We have three, three principals in the building.
So do we need to. Some of the list of questions next, of information we want back about these proposed ideas, Dr. Larson, is that what you're hoping to do?
Yes.
So I think there's some questions on lunch and learn.
And I have a question. I don't see any administration cuts here, and I thought we had set that as something we wanted to get information and see some of that, because everybody's taking a hit.
I'll go over that with the administrative restructuring report and some of the comparable data that we had.
Can we finish our questions, so we can move on? I have a couple of other questions that haven't come up yet. I am very concerned about the FTE and counselor position at the middle school. As we all know from the data that's been shared multiple times, we're the fourth lowest state in the country for ratio of counselor to students. This concerns me. This, again, student health and wellness doesn't align with that initiative, and so I'm very concerned about that cut. I'm also concerned about understanding the impact on class size for the secondary, because these are pretty big FTEs we're cutting in core academic areas. And even though Spanish and French do not have state requirements of foreign language to graduate, they're important pieces for our students to get into college. And so even though they're not really core academic areas, they are to our students. And I'm also concerned about the, the art FTE in looking at, students need one fine arts credit in high school, but they need a few more in math, social studies, and Spanish. We're reducing those, but we're increasing art. I understand that students have to go somewhere when you cut FCS, but I think our students could be taking electives in academic content areas, which would be wonderful. And that if we go through the second and third options on those sheets, I don't know if that's been done or not, that there might be spots for those kids, places. I don't know. I just would like more information on those areas.
Anything else? Anything else?
If you go down a little bit further here on the, on the, a little bit further, please. The enrollment here, whoops, I'm sorry, back up a little bit. The enrollment projected is at thirty-two ninety-four. That's more than what the board authorized, but the expectation is that not all of the students who have been accepted for enrollment will, will be here. And so those numbers might change a little bit. People do not have to commit, they got their letter and they have thirty days to respond, and we're following up with them. And then you go up a little bit higher again, please. You'll see that the kindergarten will have increased, and you see the class by grade level, how many students are, there are going to be more or less than there were. That's based on our projections of what we've had. Two-hundred-ninety, eight-grade students is quite a lot. That's up seventeen, that's our, one of our highest jumps. The second highest jump is the third and fourth grade, also seventeen students increase from last year, last year to this year. So our enrollment is, is growing, as you can tell, by forty-six students, not including the move-ins and the move-outs. And I wish I could say that these numbers are exact. The seventeen, eighteen enrollment is estimated. We know our, we know our final enrollment, when the audit is done at the end of the school year, but this is what we have on whatever date we picked when we made this, this graph. And then a little bit further on, down to the next part, this is where we are in terms of the metro class size average. So the sixteen, seventeen metro class size in kindergarten was twenty-point-seven, and we are projecting to be at twenty-point-six. First grade, three students more on average. Yeah, second grade, four-point-two. You can see that the jumps are really pretty high. Second and fifth grade are the big jumps from twenty-six-point-six to twenty-nine-point-six. Now, we don't have the seventeen, eighteen metro exu yet, or, yeah, the seventeen, eighteen, so I'm not sure when we'll get that, but we expect that to rise slightly, but still, this is not where we want to be. And then the final thing on the right is the grade progression estimates. That's what we've done. Bill shared that with us a while ago. Our secondary has a history of losing students, but we have had, generally speaking, a net gain in the last three years of, I think, I want to say it was nineteen students on average, then almost all of it's been in the elementary. But those numbers are not a sure thing either, but it would be really surprising if we did not gain any students in, in the elementaries.
I'm sorry, so if we do gain these, is that going on top of the thirty-two eighty-eight?
Yes.
And, and then what, what are you, do you have, and maybe, maybe this is part of why we have so many questions, is, do you have kind of a secondary plan of, okay, if these people move in, then this will look really good for second and fifth grade, because we'll be able to add those sections back? Is that kind of the thought process, but we just haven't seen that yet?
And you won't see it until, because we're not going to build a budget on phantom students.
I know we're not building a budget, but it's hard to, for us to know, if we're talking about extra students, and not know what that means in the, as far as the classroom and the, and the experience for the children.
But Lynn's vague. Yeah, and I think you were kind of asking, okay, what our priority points would be. Obviously, second grade.
If this happens.
And fifth grade would be. And even, like Dr. Larson talked about, okay, if you get seven to, you know, fifteen kids or whatever, it doesn't have to be just in second grade. It could be K through five, it could be at the middle school, high school. But then you look at that, okay, fifteen students, first of all, all right, let's try to get the second grade class down, or whatever it might be. But those would be the discussions we would continually have as we get more students in. And one of our cautions was on the, okay, there's a few more fifth grade students that we could accept in, but would that put us over that thirty-three eighty-eight? You know, so if, if we can be flexible with that number, and it could be a little bit higher, but we'll know a little bit more as we know if people accept it, oh, you know, if they, if we call and then they say, oh, yes, we're coming, or some kids say, we're not coming, then it gives us a better idea.
So I think, right now, we're set at thirty-two eighty-eight, but I think it would be helpful for the board if you came back and said, this is where we're at, there's this many left in open enrollment, would you like to increase the number? I think that would be helpful for us to be given an understanding of what that would present and what that would mean as far as the sections.
We can do that for, where I think all the pressure points are. I do want to say a couple of things about pressure points. We're talking mostly about the elementary schools, but I think there are pressure points in sixth grade and seventh grade, because those issues are not true teaming anymore, and that violates our middle school model. The high school, I will get from probably sometime next week where they are with some class sizes. I have, I have heard that there are class sizes that, right at this point, are in the high thirties, and might even hit forty students. And so we need to figure out if that's, A, if that's correct, and then B, what are we going to do about it? So there's a lot of competing issues here. And this, I think, does point out the need for additional funding and a levy.
No question about that. Any additional questions or comments about these?
So on April twelfth, we'll have information about the B squad coaches, lunch and learn program. Mrs. Nickelby, we'll ask her to explain the rationale for the counselor reduction, impact on class sizes at the secondary, the middle school model, and the high pressure points at the high school, and we'll also be asking why the increases in art. Are those the questions that?
Yeah, I thought we were going to find out what's been implemented and what hasn't been implemented.
These are discussion, this is a discussion of.
Of the recommendations.
I know, but the one point.
The one point six million, well, that came down because we had those early retirement incentives.
Right.
For example.
Everything's played into, everything's tied into the six-point-two, but what's been done already, that's a done deal. That's not being discussed anymore. I mean.
The teacher contract?
Okay.
The incentive, the incentives for retirement?
Click on this page.
Q, the Q Comp?
It's in the piece that Phil wrote on preliminary budget. You already have it?
Oh, yeah.
It's there.
I think we need to move on.
Can I just?
No, it's not.
Are you going to get into administration cuts in the next part?
Next topic is administration restructuring.
Okay, is that going to, because I don't see any cuts on the, on the budget cuts, so that's what I want to make sure we touch on. If it's not in the next section, then in the list of questions.
I'm putting the list of questions in. I don't want to, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on this, given the time.
Yeah. Okay. Should I, is there a keyboard? Yes, here you go.
This is not in our packet?
No, it was sent out, no, it wasn't. The whole thing was, the whole document was sent out, but this is not. This was completed this afternoon. And this summarizes the document that was sent out. So the, the charge was pretty obvious here, and this was given at a board meeting, I believe it was in February twenty-second, to create this task force to look at all these building level administrative structures. And this is the building levels, and this is the tenant, and looking to find out what the best services were. We had, these people were on the task force members. We met three times during spring break. I ended up writing the report that you got today. The task force got it on Friday. I had two people reply back with suggestions. I frankly am a little, a single author is not always a good way to do things. So, and I was the single author on that, and so there, there may be some other people that have other suggestions or thoughts on it. The requests, these were the five main things that were requested. A lot of it was able to be pulled off from the principals, making contacts with other school districts. We were able to get some district organizational charts. We tried to do as many comparables as we could. There was a question about required administrative statutes and the rules and what they were going to be. We looked, we did not look at the cost of each position, rather, we lumped them together. We found that to be more apples to apples. And then we looked at the other districts. So these were the districts from whom we pulled the organizational charts, and these were the students that they had. A lot of this stuff was done because it was fairly easy to do. Columbia Heights had recently done a study about this, and so they had access, we had access to their information. We had to contact other school districts to get these. Stillwater and White Bear Lake, we included in this because they're our neighboring schools, but except for West St. Paul, the other ones are actually relatively, relatively safe, similarly sized. In the document that I sent out earlier, it's very, very lengthy, but most of the districts are very comparable, but there are some key differences. And one of the differences is in the titles of people. There is a difference between a manager and a director. Directors has more direct supervision, and therefore, they're paid at a higher rate. I, I do give some examples of differences that we have on our organizational chart that are different than some of the other school districts. For example, we do not have a communication specialist or a communication director, as many other districts do. We have a contracted employee who is hourly, and so there's some cost savings in that. There's no benefits that are paid, there's no office space that's provided, but it's not, it's a model that, that probably doesn't work very well, which is why there's been some turnover in that. The other thing that we don't do as much of as other school districts do is have teachers on special assignment. If you hear the expression tosa, that's what that is. It's a teacher on special assignment. For example, Richfield has literacy, this, maths, that, and they're basically teachers on special assignment. The advantage of that, and from a cost perspective, is that it's a teacher who will probably get paid a little bit more for an extended contract. We looked at these districts for the building positions, and these districts were ones that were pulled either because they were close or similarly sized, or we had access to them. So we actually did make the calls, the principals called the other principals there and found out just what they had for support. Some of the numbers are a little bit soft. Centennial, for example, said they had two thousand students at the high school. Some other schools were much more accurate, so they're a little bit ballparked. And one of the things that we found is that the dean of students' positions is used relatively commonly, and that was one of the questions that was asked. What do deans do, and what should they be taking care of, and how, what's their licensure and all of that type of thing? Lynn Vicker found this information that, when she spoke with people, the deans sometimes are administrative, and sometimes they're more in lines of guidance and counseling. Sometimes there's a, like a dean of social work, and then they would focus on social emotional needs rather than that. Generally speaking, they're paid on a teacher contract, there's sometimes there's a stipend, and a lot of times, there's additional work in the summer. There are more deans at the middle school levels than there are at the high school levels.
One thing to that, too.
Yeah.
Dean, I found out from the buildings, it doesn't necessarily replace the assistant principal. Every building that I talked to that had deans.
Also had a principal and an assistant principal, but then they had, like, a dean of social work, a dean that has more of the administrative license. So it was, it was more of a model of replacing more of the counseling support staff and things in that versus an assistant principal. Everybody had the principal and assistant principal that had the deans.
When we looked at building principals, and this is self-reported data from the other school districts, we have, and I encountered, a principal, an assistant principal, and associate principals all being the same, did not include activity directors in this particular example. The Montevideo High School ratio, five-hundred-and-ninety-three students per principal. The lowest is South St. Paul, and it's twenty-three, but that's a little bit misleading, because they have a K-five building and a six-twelve building. And so when you look at it in six-twelve for grades six through twelve, it, I think it's actually a little bit higher than that, but based on the numbers that they presented, that's the ratio that they have. The highest is White Bear Lake, at about seven hundred twenty students per principal. Well, but the average is four hundred eighty-eight students per principal. Also looked at the median, we had fourteen school districts, and as you can see here, four seventy-two. A case can be made that Montomeda is the third highest of these fourteen school districts in terms of students per principal, and an assistant or additional principal, part-time. Case could be made for that, because that would bring the ratio down to within a more, more normal from these position, buildings. The middle school, the ratio here is four hundred fourteen per students. There's thirteen school districts. I did not include South St. Paul because of the six-twelve configuration, and so the average of these school districts is four hundred thirty-two students. We're pretty close in terms of where we are median-wise. The dean, though, gets to be something a little bit complicated. Sometimes they use dean in counseling situations, and sometimes they're treated as administration dealing with student management, which is oftentimes the role of an assistant principal. When, when you take the deans into account, then the average of those schools that also have a dean, it jumps down to three twenty-seven. The median is three hundred seventeen, and I said per administrator, because I counted a dean as administration in that instance. We do not have a dean, and so there's not a dean student at the, at the middle school. The ratio per principals is within line, but when you count the deans, then the case can be made to add a dean at the middle school. At the elementary schools, every place had one per building. There was one principal throughout. In fact, the task force was very supportive of each building having its own principal, very much opposed to having a split principal, in our case, between early childhood and, excuse me, between Wildwood and O.H. Anderson. We also looked at the supervision of early childhood. Where does that fall? Currently, it falls under community education. Kathy Rylan, Dr. Rylan included this in, it's in the report, because the funding stream is separate, and the programming aligns with the mission and purpose of community ed. I still think that one of our issues that we have to deal with is early childhood as being a part of and a part from, and so we really need to make sure that we're paying careful attention to see that they're included as much as they can be when it's appropriate and separate when they're not. But I think that's an ongoing issue, that we certainly did have some growing pains when they first moved into Wildwood. Activity director here. We just have the one activity director. The average was fourteen hundred forty students to, per activity director in the other districts. The median was sixteen seventy-eight. There, the seven largest school districts that we looked at had sixteen seventy-eight to twenty-two twenty-six. No one reported having an assistant activity director, although I know of one school district that does have one, and there was one school district that had an activity director and an athletic director, and that brought the ratio down. So our, our average, our ratio is pretty high, eleven eighty-seven, but there are seven of the fourteen districts that have a much larger ratio. But again, activity directors, I'm not sure where that is. And this is self-reported data from the high school administration. The three administrators spent an average of three and a half nights for weekends and outside of school events. I do think that the rigors of an activity director does have higher turnout. I don't have data to support that, except anecdotally from the other area superintendents, and it's sometimes difficult to tracking and maintaining candidates. In nine years here, we've had four activity directors. School psychs. This is an area of support. In all the fourteen school districts, they all had school psychologists. Most of them had one per building, and so we're very similar to the other districts in that. I think that most people would really want to have more additional support for school psychologists. I don't see it as a priority at this time. It feels as if we're doing fairly well, and I think we're meeting the needs of students in that instance. We've made some good strides in counseling. Four years ago, we had three counselors at the high school. We added one, and then we also added one at the middle school. We went from two to three, and then we went from zero to one at O.H. Anderson. So the high school ratio is two hundred ninety-seven students per counselor. This is for college and, college and career counseling and other counseling. I didn't separate them out. Of the schools that we looked at, the average is three ninety-two, and we're right smack dab in the middle of the median there. Dean of students, at the high school level, four of the school districts utilize that model, and if those positions are utilized in the guidance role, then the ratios would change a little bit. Our guidance ratio at the high school is better than many others, although I think that a case could be made just on the social emotional needs of students that would be beneficial, and I would also posit that the suggestions and the things that we're going to be doing with restorative practices will help in that sense. At the middle school, we're currently at two hundred seventy-five students per counselor. We have a behavior specialist, and then that ratio would drop to two hundred six per licensed support staff. Of the middle school, the average you can see is four hundred twenty-seven students, and the median, three ninety-nine. However, this is also really difficult to quantify, and it's in the appendix that you, that you have, and I did make a chart of it, because we do have additional support. There's some places that have behavior coaches, others have social workers, interventionists, gifted and talented, cultural liaison, and there's probably more that aren't being included in there. But if you do look at, what I tried to do is make it as apples to apples as I could. I don't, I would not put a whole lot of stock in my apples to apples comparison, because I just don't know how much of these people's time is spent on a behavior coach. Is that like a counselor, or is that like a administrator who deals with student management? So it's, it's a little bit soft on that part of it, but the average ratio, then, when you look at it, drops quite a bit. Restorative practices, you heard tonight, and this was also part of the conversation that we had at the task force. We believe that there is a need for dedicated support. You heard from Mrs. Nickelby and Ms. Tester at a school board meeting a little while ago about the work that's being done with that. I think a strong case can be made for an additional social work-type position at the secondary level. Here's some of the needs that they listed there. They have this class called study strategies. It's in the WEX lab, so if you ever heard the term WEX lab, that's where that is. They also have students, RGA stands for restorative justice, that they go through that. Then students will not be suspended out of school, but they will be dealing with restorative practices and restorative justices. During the course of this year, we've also had fifteen students leave. The high school does have a behavior specialist, but it's clearly not enough dedicated time for the needs of that. You also heard about some of the co-located providers that we have there, from Family Means and Hazelton, but they have waiting lists for students. And so a lot of these things make a real strong case for, for restorative justice. The one thing that had not been commented on very much at all was the increased demand of social media behaviors. According to Justin McDonough at our meeting on Wednesday, the school, school resource officer, he says every major incident has had its genesis, or at least has had social media contribute to the negativity of what's happened. That's the Snapchat or Twitter and all sorts of things like that. And so the restorative practices, as you heard tonight, this position can be funded through the integration budget at no cost of the general fund. It'll work like a social worker with restorative practices. The other question that was asked, another thing, was about what is required administration? This was shared with the task, the task force. You do not have to have a building principal. There's a mandate that schools have to have an academic administrative record, but that's not a principal, and, but each district is required to have a superintendent. We also looked at position costs. We didn't look at them from an individual basis, we looked at them rather in lump sum. The information is self-reported, and I have the word fudge here in italics, because you, there's a category for MDE, the Department of Education, that's school, and district administration. You would, you could, you would have to count at a minimum all the principals and the superintendent. But building business manager, would you include that in that? You could or not. If you wanted to make that number look lower, then you would not include it necessarily. We looked at these comparable districts, that we oftentimes compare ourselves to them, and what we found is that if you put, if you lump the numbers this way, how much of the district expenses are spent on regular education? So in Montomeda's case, fifty-one percent of our expenses, our expenditures go to regular education. What percent go to the district and school administration and district support? So you add up all the people that are district and school administration and district support, and so that gives you a much more accurate and true depiction. As you can see from here, fifty-one percent, we're behind Minnetonka in terms of the money that they spend on regular education, but we're ahead of all the others, and in terms of administration, White Bear Lake is less than us. The one thing that I, among the things I don't like about this graph, this particular chart, is that you don't have the percentages, these are whole numbers. So this could be seven point four-nine, and it could just gets rounded to seven, or it could be six point five-one, and gets rounded up. And so while I think they're accurate and they give a good snapshot, they're not the exact, you know, down-to-the-penny type information. But this is telling, is the fact that we do not spend more money on administration than other school districts do. When you look at, lumped into these two categories, district and school administration as one bucket, and then the second bucket is district support, so that's a key point, and then we also spend a significant amount on regular education. In the document that was sent out to the task force and in the appendix, it also includes special education. I didn't include it here, because I wanted to point out the, the differences in those two things. And this summarizes it a little bit. Again, using the dividing, you get to seven point five-seven percent, but it doesn't get down to the exact penny as there is. There were some other points of importance from the task force. One of the comments is that there's a parenting need. We need to share with parents, like, how to be a good, successful parent of a third grader, or substitute third grader with hockey player, middle school, or something like that, that there's an issue that they have. There was a lot of talk about social media and how disruptive it is, how we can best educate families and students, so that's an ongoing concern. I believe that there's a need for more active, official, social media presence. I think a full-time communications person would help with that. We do not have a very active Facebook page. We do have some Twitter accounts, but it's not the, the presence that, that it could be. The job descriptions, we did review them, and we need to look at them through the lens of the established competencies. A lot of the job descriptions that we polled were basically things that we had had in the past. The conversation about social emotional needs was something that had gone on quite a lot. People talked about it oftentimes. There's more need that needs to be done, and I think the needs are going to be growing. There's an issue about the consistency between the buildings. What happens at, at one school, it doesn't always carry over. O.H. Anderson and Wildwood have done a good job with restore, excuse me, with responsive classroom. I think we need to do the same type of thing with restorative practices at the secondary level. I mentioned already about restorative practices. One of the things about the task force, the job descriptions were correct, and in fact, there was one comment there about, there seems like there's nothing that can be taken off any of these plates. There was discussion, but no decision or recommendation about a full-time grant writer, and everything, everything is seen as important, and so that, that becomes really difficult. At, at the end of this, I tried to come up with three things. What, so what, and now what? And the what part is basically examining the things that we did in the comparison. It's clear that Montomeda's not had the administrative staffing abundance that some have accused the district of having. That's borne out through Minnesota Department of Education, it's borne out through the organizational charts, and it's borne out through the contacts with the other school districts. But we also have to look at, how can we best meet the needs of students? A lot of dean of students, some social worker, there's equity people, there's a lot of different positions in there, and that's in the appendix. But clearly, there is not one answer that all we have to do is do the same thing as somebody else is doing. So after the what comes the so what. So what does this mean? I think there are some actionable steps, restorative practices, and then communication specialists. I think these are the two needs that, that I saw that came out of this. But again, the problem with that is that it's a one-author report. And then the now what? And generally speaking, I try not to use the first person when writing, but this, this is coming from me, and not from the committee, or from the task force, excuse me. And I believe there needs to be more time spent on this, and it should involve more people. We put this, tried to put this together in three weeks. We had about two weeks of meetings, some research that was done, and then I wrote the report during the spring break time. Our gap analysis was okay. We had feedback from the middle school and some of the elementary, but it wasn't as much at the high school, and I think it needs to be more complete. I think it would be more complete if given more time. I think that the first draft is a good step, but I don't think it goes far enough. I, I do think we need to continue to look at the data, see if it is accurate, and if there are efficiencies down the road. Before I make some final comments, Julie and Kevin were also on the committee. Is there other things that I should be adding or including?
I, I really wanted to thank Nicole for all of the extra effort that you put in on the job descriptions. Really was impressive how much time you put in.
Yes, I, I agree with that, and it wasn't, it was Nicole, and Bill, and Lynn, and a whole lot of other people that went into the mix. But what I, there's a number of things that, observations and things that I kind of thought of, and kind of go, starting, starting the process before we really got into it. What, what I hope would be outcomes of, of this, I have four things that I'd hope to be outcomes, and the first is the board understanding. You know, we're tasked to be leaders, set, set policy, hire superintendent, but also have an understanding of finance. That's one of the, in statute, we have to have. But having gone through it, so my first thing is just this board understanding, and I feel, having gone through the nine hours, how many hours, it was a few hours, that I have a much more, even after twelve years of being on the board, I have a much more robust understanding of, of the administrative piece of, of this district. So, so one of the things for me was Matt, was a board understanding for myself, and hopefully you kind of felt the same way. I mean, never before had I seen job descriptions of, of key, key staff. So, I mean, Lynn, yours was eight pages or something like that. I know you made it big font, yeah. So that was the first one. Also, levy, potential levy information, if we do decide to go out for levy, having at my disposal a lot of the different pieces, especially the one that does the comparisons, because that's oftentimes what we hear from people, is, well, how come White Bear is so much more efficient with this? Or why does Stillwater, you know, there are these things that come up, and before this, I didn't really have the facts. I mean, you're entitled to your own opinions, but not your own facts, and so I feel much better now that we've actually taken that comparison of district support and district administration and put those together. I now can answer that question pretty, pretty well. I might need a little cheat sheet in the card, but other than that, we've got the data, and it's pretty compelling. We're, we're doing pretty, pretty well when we compare ourselves. Orno is the district that is demographically the most like us, and we did get some information, but they were dealing with the potential issue there of the threats and things going on, so it was hard to get everything we needed, but, you know, they are probably the most, wouldn't you say, Bill, the most like us of, as far as size and demographics and, yep. So.
Just for interrupting, they also get nine hundred dollars more for students on their levy, Montomeda does.
Right. Then, we saw that, the instruction was the same, but they had two more support staff. Also, then, I had down, looking for opportunities, that just because we do something currently one-way doesn't mean that there isn't room for improvement. And I would like this to be the beginning of kind of continuing to look for improvement or what I call opportunities. And, and then finally, the last part that I hope to come out of this, and I think has and will be valuable, is a roadmap for the new superintendent, she or he, that would come to work for us, that they would be able to pick up the hundred and forty-two page, oh, yeah, that's kind of a lot, but that they can pretty quickly read through this and, and really grasp a lot of what we're all about, that it's, you know, I think it will be very helpful for that new person to be able to go through this, and then hopefully start asking questions, and why have we always done it this way, and that, that kind of thing. So those are the things that I would say that I got out of this, and I still think that there are opportunities that we need to look at. I don't know what they are, and that's why I think this is the beginning of a conversation. I think we, the initial thing was, I think we saw some opportunities with some retirements, and what could we do there? And so that's kind of what I got out of it.
I think we should all get a copy of the flow chart, the, the actual administrative chart, so it would be much clearer for all of us to see it was kind of updated.
The org chart.
Yeah, the organization chart. And, and I'm sorry, Kirsten, that I didn't thank you for all your phone calls. You and Kathy made so many phone calls to gather information, too. It was really, it was helpful information. It was really, it was helpful information, really helpful.
The work that was done on this was, was impressive, and Julie, thank you for recognizing the people that have done the work on that. That means a lot coming from the board members, so appreciate that. The other thing is that we're within the normal range on all of these things, or in fact, we're a little bit lean administratively in some of the positions. I do think that there is possibility, and the dean of students is something that I think can make a big difference. I think the restorative practices is something that would make, would matter, but there is not a recommendation to not have an elementary principal at Wildwood. I think we need to have one there. There is not a recommendation to eliminate a principal at the secondary level. Rather, there is a recommendation to add that dean of students, restorative practice, social worker type position at no cost of the general fund by using the integration funding. We do need to have some, some decision made about communications. I know that Bill and I have talked about trying to go through the budget and look at what we paid for contracting, what we've paid for graphic design, and look to combine that with some community education, communication piece, but we are going to need someone particularly, particularly in the upcoming months.
That's true.
So my understanding in the board asking for this task force report was specifically around the open principal position, and that we were holding, we were advertising that position, but we were holding it, and then the board also asked to be on all the administrative searches going forward as we looked at this and as we thought about this transition to a new superintendent. And my understanding is that no board member was involved in the specialized director search. There were some interviews, but we were notified very late of that. I can see on our website, we have the principal position posted as we discussed, but the purpose of the report, too, was so the board can make a decision of if we were going to continue that search or not, or if that was a search we would be holding for the new superintendent. And so in looking at the document, it says this is an ideal time to consider the larger system to provide information to the board, a new superintendent. So my question is, I don't think it can be answered tonight, but I'm concerned because we've received this today. I have not read it. I think, Dr. Larson, for the summary, that's very helpful in our thinking, but we've got to make a decision on this principal position, and that's what this was supposed to help us do tonight, is to be able to make that decision, because we have applicants waiting. Should we move it forward or not? Because there, I mean, and I'm not saying we cut it, but there is, you know, should we make it interim so the new superintendent has the option to hire their administrative staff? We agreed with the specialized position, that it made sense because of how difficult it is to fill that position, and now we have another opening, I believe, administratively coming, every time it was announced Monday. And so we have all these positions, and we have this new superintendent coming on, so I'm not sure how we're supposed to make a decision at this point, so the administration knows how to move forward with that principal piece. And if we're going to move that forward, how do we ensure a board member is involved? Because a board member was left off this bed one, and we were asked, we asked specifically to be involved in that.
Well, if the, if the board. The task force was very adamant and insistent in the fact that they felt they needed to be a principal at, at both buildings. Both the board doesn't value a principal at one of the buildings, and that we don't have.
It's not about not valuing. And that's not what I asked. I mean, it has to do with.
But then we don't have, but these are all value choices.
Right. But is it an interim principal for a year so the new superintendent can hire? Is it moving to a dean of students model? You know, you yourself said there wasn't enough time to fully digest and, and do this work, and so the question we were trying to answer is, do we fill these positions now, or do we do something interim for a year for the new superintendent to tackle it? And I don't feel, we can answer that question tonight, and so do we keep holding this principal position? I mean, we said we were going to open it, but not hire it until we had this conversation and we can make a decision. I'm not comfortable making a decision because I've not read the document. So we have to push that out at least another two weeks and have conversations at the next board meeting, I assume. I guess that's why I'm asking the board, is that what we're saying? I mean, because we haven't had time to read this document.
We haven't had time to read the document.
Right. But we have candidates in a pool, because the recommendation from administration was to go ahead and advertise, so we put it out there. I'm not sure, I don't remember what the closing date was on it, but, I mean, I'm trying to figure out what our next steps are, and I'm a little disappointed that no board member was a part of the specialized director search when we specifically said a board member should be on all those searches, and then we weren't, that was not followed through on. So I just want to make sure that, that what we're saying is clear to administration.
The closing date is Monday.
Okay.
Thank you, Lynn.
Do you have lots of applicants? Lots of applicants?
I guess my own bias would be, I think we should go ahead with the process and hire, but it is nice to have the new guy have his hand on who he wants or she wants in that position, so.
I thought our main job was just to hire a superintendent and.
That's our biggest job.
And rely on the administration to hire the people they feel they need.
Superintendent typically will hire the principals. You know, we could certainly be part of the interview process and stuff, and.
That's what we asked.
But ultimately, the superintendent does hire, you know.
So we never made a situation. Yes, we did.
We're not going to decide this tonight, so.
So, but since we're not, so since we're not saying tonight, the principal position will not move forward with any kind of committee review or work because there's no board member appointed, and there's no direction from the board about if that should be filled, is what we're saying. I just want to be clear.
Anybody want to give direction?
I'm not comfortable giving direction without reading the report.
All right.
Okay.
So can I just follow up? So for the questions of the previous conversation, we talked about administration cuts. From this presentation, it looks like what we're going to read in the report is that there's actually recommendations for additions rather than cuts. Given the fact that there are possible retirements that we keep hearing about, could we, could that be included in that set of questions as to maybe not make cuts, but figure out ways to reconfigure things in light of those, so that we're not, I know, but he's got to come back with, he's got a list of questions, and I, I just feel like that, but we're hearing of retirements just in last week, too, so that, that changes it a little. So I just want that to be part of what we get some feedback on in, in the next two weeks, because, yes, it sounds like we are doing as much as we can, but we've got to squeeze every little corner we can. Our teachers are, you know, facing really hard upcoming year, and I, that needs to be considered when we're looking across the board. The administration also has to, to squeeze every little, through the last drop they can. So I really appreciate every effort to be made to look at that.
Okay, anybody else?
We have one action item. We threw the data on it at the facility meeting about the lighters and the dimmers. We need to, uh, advertise for this.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All of David's sound?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.